Good evening, everyone. It is 6:03 PM on Monday, the 20th of May, 2024. And I will call the Northborough Select Board meeting to order, and I will welcome Mike Tejin as our newest elected member. Thank you. Congratulations. I understand for the record, you've been sworn in, correct?
Yes, I have, yes.
Excellent. So you are official. Thank you very much. Our first order of business after an election is reorganization. And I understand, Julianne, you have a motion to make?
Yes, I do. I'd like to move that the vote to reorganize be postponed until the first meeting in September, with the most recent chair and clerks continuing in their positions, and the clerk also serving as vice chair until this reorganization. And I'd like to offer my reasons for this.
Could someone second the motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, please, go ahead.
So, first of all, we have a new member who I don't know very well and doesn't know us very well. And I've always thought, ever since I've been on the board, that doing this reorganization, the first meeting of a new member, it just doesn't seem to be logical until we all get to know each other. And secondly, this year, we're going to do something different, which is a goal-setting meeting. And I think we'll get to know our priorities more after that meeting or during that meeting. And for those reasons, I think that it would be wise to postpone this decision.
That's a good idea. I appreciate that thought. I want to make sure you're okay serving as vice chair. And the reason for that is Kristen, who is no longer on the board, was vice chair, your clerk. So sort of, I've considered you acting vice chair, as you could probably tell by the number of emails that you've been copied on over the past week, week and a half. So that sounds good to me. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, we have four in favor, one opposed. Motion passes. We will remain as is, other than as described, until the first meeting in September. Thank you. Andy, you ended up having to do nothing, did you? Sorry about that. I should have given you the virtual gavel for that piece. Okay, thank you. Is there anything else that we need to do from your perspective before we continue with the regular business of the meeting? Okay, excellent. All right, with that, we have an executive session scheduled. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for a few items.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21a6, to consider a lease agreement for premises located at 4 West Main Street; MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21a6, to consider a purchase and sales agreement for premises located at 13 Church Street; and MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21a7, to review and consider the following executive session meeting minutes: February 26, 2024; March 25, 2024; March 27, 2024; and May 13, 2024, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on going to executive session? This one does need to be a roll call vote. Laura?
Aye.
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 So vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. We are now going to executive session. Per the agenda, it says 7 PM return to open session. So even if we finish our executive session early, we will not return to open session until 7 o'clock. So people have proper notice to join. It is conceivable that the executive session could take longer, in which case, we won't return to open session until work concluded with our executive session. With that, why don't we press all the magic technology buttons to end temporarily or pause the open session and go into executive session? Thank you.
We had, as always, a very exciting executive session, but now we're back in open session. And the first item, as always, is public comment. Is there anyone here in the audience or electronically that would like to speak? Gibb, I reckon, come on up.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I need you to come up and sit over here so folks at home can hear you.
Oh, I get a chair.
You do get a chair. You have your choice of chairs.
Right. Quick, I know you got a lot on your agenda and there's a lot of items. It's been almost a year come August that we went through a whole mess of goals and action items. I don't know how many ever got fulfilled. I think there's a lot of them still outstanding. There's COVID, you know, monies that probably still need to be spent. As I said with the annual meeting, I'm going to try to be a voice here for the resident taxpayer, but I, you know, I respectfully request going forward that the decisions that you all have to consider and make, that you take into consideration the financial capabilities of the resident taxpayers and that not everyone is equal in their capabilities of absorbing costs. And there's a lot of costs on the agenda. There's a lot of capital improvement items that are big, big costs. And I don't, you know, there's a big question. I think you need to prioritize some of those and, you know, take another look at them to see about reducing expenditures. And there's all kinds of ways of doing that. I would also like you to consider going forward principles of smart growth, sustainable communities, and make a goal of well-being, of the residents' well-being, living capabilities, as opposed to just straight economic, And I hope going forward that you have a quick and smooth, respectful and courteous transfer of chairmanship. And I wish you all the best.
Thanks, Gibb.
And I hope you get home earlier tonight than you did last week. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm gonna watch you.
I'm on notice.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from either the in-person audience or electronic audience that wishes to speak to us during public comment? Not seeing any hands up. Going once, going twice. All right, I'll consider public comment closed. We did do the reorganization item in the open session before the executive sessions. We moved past that. Next up, we have approval of meeting minutes of March 18, March 25, and April 1. Is there a motion on that or anything to discuss? If folks are all comfortable with all those three sets, we can do that as one motion.
I'm going to move the board to approve the March 18, 2024, the March 25, 2024, and the April 1, 2024 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Lisa, seconded. I think I heard Laura first before Julianne. Any, and my anticipation is, Mike, you, actually, you can either vote or not vote. It's up to you.
Yeah, no, I believe I'm familiar with those meetings, so I'll go ahead and vote.
Perfect. We're all present, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, vote is unanimous in favor. Meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a public hearing to consider petition number 30894693, as submitted by Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protected fixtures along and across West Street. So I'll open that public hearing as described. And welcome to the meeting. Identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Silver, and I work for National Grid.
Hi, Jeff.
I'm here to discuss the petition that's on the agenda.
Excellent. So I'm going to turn to my page for this here. Okay, and, yeah, let's see. Scott Sharpton here. I'm seeing you here. I'm going to bring you in. Still getting used to these hybrid things. Hi, Scott, how are you? You are unmuted, but I do not hear you. I don't hear you.
I believe we're muted or speakers off.
I'll let Owen do whatever needs to get done there. Yeah, I don't have access to the full screen, just zoom remotely.
I think it's the bottom right.
Yeah, I think the sound is off on the whole computer.
Oh, the whole thing is off, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Scott, try us again.
One, two, three.
Hey, there he is.
There we go. All right, we hear you. Now, question, when Jeff was introducing himself, were you able to hear him all right, just to test that microphone?
I did. I heard him clearly.
Okay, good. So that confirms your microphone is good. So which one of you wants to kick us off and give us a summary?
Scott can do a fantastic job.
Jeff starts?
Of course. So the pole has two existing tree guys. One is National Grids, and the other one is Verizon's. The proposal is to remove those tree guys and install an anchor into the ground, which would actually help the issue that's there now because of the walking path and the existing guys that run through it.
So are you, sorry, can I ask a question?
Of course. Can I ask anything?
Are you talking about the wires that are into the woods?
Correct.
Those are the guy wires?
Yes.
And you're looking at replacing those two guy wires with a new pole?
So it's gonna be, the pole stays. They're gonna shorten those guy wires to an anchor that's gonna be into the ground rather than into the tree.
Okay.
So there's a stake that I put there on Tuesday, Wednesday. And if you want, if you want to drive by there to go look at it, it's about 10 to 12 feet off of the pole, and it's into the ground, and that's where the anchor will be.
Do you have any photos of the work that you, sorry, I saw a plan, but it's always nice to photograph to get a better understanding of what you know and what you haven't seen.
I didn't take a photo of it. Scott drove by there to look at it.
Yep. So town staff did go to the site, observed the two existing tree guys. One is substantially slacked. It's good practice to get guys out of trees in the event there's a concern or issue with the tree. One of the existing guys actually poses a bit of a challenge to the Cold Harbor Brook Trail that runs in this area, so the new guy location will clear that trail of the guy. We did review it. We have a memorandum in the packet that outlines what our review found, which was identifying Verizon's guy and making sure that one can be removed as well, and notifying the police department before the work proceeds.
Can I ask more questions?
Yes.
So is there something going on that's creating this new, is it just because there's slack in the wire that it needs to be changed? Do you want it to be more passable for hikers on the trail? Or is there something else that's driving this improvement?
There's a new home being constructed at number 75 West Street.
Okay.
Across the street from the pole. Jeff can explain why the guy is needed to support that service.
We no longer install tree guys. So over time, the tree will die.
Okay.
Causing an issue further on into the future. So preventative maintenance is, we get rid of it now and fix it the way it's supposed to be fixed.
So are you using this to connect to the new house on West Street?
No, it's just work that was added to the job because of the work being done at 75 West. So preventative maintenance and avoiding future issues.
Thank you.
Question. Yeah, regarding the tree guy wires, I had a, I believe it was a lineman or an inspector looking on my street from Charter Communications and was quite surprised that he saw the tree wires. He was from, I think, New York State, saying that these shouldn't be there, you shouldn't have that. So is National Grid beyond this project looking at replacing those? Because obviously, a tree's gonna eventually die.
As we get to them and see them, they are being modified.
Modified.
So we're removing it from the tree and putting it most likely into the ground, or sometimes we do a pole-to-pole guy depending on the situation and how physics determines how we have to do it.
Is it an issue where if a customer was to reach out to National Grid, they would be put on some list for that upgrade or improvement?
I had a customer call me from a different town two weeks ago, and ours was replaced, but Verizon's was still in the tree. So I told them to reach out to Verizon to get it fixed.
Okay, so a National Grid customer, or they could reach out if it's one of yours.
Right. So if the tree is dead or dying, or they're gonna do work on the tree to get rid of it, we will go out there and make the modifications that need to be done.
Okay. But if it was, say, a healthy tree, it can wait, realistically?
Realistically, but we still like to.
Would like to replace it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there gonna be any cost incurred by the town for this?
No.
And now the new wire is gonna go closer to the pole where it is, so it's totally away from the trail.
Approximately 10 to 12 feet from the base of the pole.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? This being a public hearing, if there is anyone from our audience, either in person, which I say is unlikely, given the room is mostly empty, or remote, if you could raise your physical or electronic hand and let us know, I'll be happy to recognize you. I can see the attendees list over there. We have to tap that. Hey, Tim, before you sit down, can you do me a favor and tap the attendees tab at the top there? Give us another way of keeping an eye on the public. Thank you. Okay.
And that's not gonna cross the trail at all? Okay. I just know the wire where it is right now.
That's what it looks like when it's complete.
And that's the pole that's currently there?
It's a, a pole that's there. It's not like that pole, but.
Are you gonna be replacing the pole as well?
No, the pole's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, not seeing any hands up from the audience. I will say going once, going twice. I will entertain then a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura to close the public hearing. All those in favor, we can, still getting used to the whole just regular vote. Everyone say?
I've got one more question.
Oh, yeah, we can still talk.
Aye, yep.
Okay, all right. Any opposed or any abstentions? Okay. Lisa, were you in favor of closing the public hearing?
I said no.
Okay, I didn't hear you. I apologize. All right, your public hearing is now closed. We haven't voted yet on the petition, so yes.
Yeah, no, this isn't gonna change that, but my question is, is the road gonna be closed for any period of time when this work is gonna be done? Okay. Perfect. The road was closed for a good chunk of last summer, which created some challenges unrelated to that. So I just wanted to make sure that the residents knew if it would be closed.
Was that because of the water line they were putting in or something? They were doing some work on the road, I remember.
Scott would know better than me. I'm not sure what the work was. When they had ripped the road up for a couple months this past summer?
Yeah, there was a common drive under construction just before Cherry Street, and that common drive supports, I believe, three lots. The water main was extended from the existing terminus on West Street up to the intersection with Cherry by the developer. So that was water main work. You're correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
One more question. Are there any additional poles being put in along the street, or you're just modifying them?
The additional pole that's being installed is gonna be on a customer's property.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions before we entertain a motion on the petition? Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I move the board vote to approve petition number 30894693 on West Street, as submitted by National Grid, with the following conditions: the police department be notified prior to the start of any work. All existing guy wires are to be removed, and any replacement guy wires are to be installed as proposed in a meeting in the field on Monday, May 13, 2024. That the removal of the existing guy wires be completed as soon as possible.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Mike, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion?
Did we ask about, will the local residents be losing power briefly?
No.
Wow, that's amazing.
Try to be amazing.
Because you're not, you're not changing the wires on the top of the pole, just a support. So as long as the pole doesn't fall during the process, you're good.
I'm amazing.
Okay, that's because you're amazing. I'll go with that. With that, we've got a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I see that as unanimous. Very good. So, thank you.
Have a great day.
You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to stay, of course, but.
I would love to, but I have an hour drive left.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Lori Connors, Planning Director, who I see here. So Lori, I'm going to bring you in. Yeah. Scott, are you sticking around for this also?
Yeah, I'm happy to be here. We're to support if Lori needs any help, but I can give you a little insight as to the next steps for what she's proposing.
Okay, great. So I'll just read the agenda item for the public's benefit. Request for support of the following community one-stop-for-growth grants. First is a Route 9 sewer extension project through Mass Works. The second is a downtown branding and wayfinding project through the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative. And the third is a White Cliff Mansion Architect Services for the Underutilized Project Grant. Welcome, Lori.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. So that was a good introduction. I am here to talk to you about three grants that I'm in the process of preparing. The community one-stop.
Lori, hold on just a second. I just got a message from someone who is saying that the sound is muted in the video stream. Owen, is that something you can?
What video stream?
Let me see if I can find out. Yeah, I just want to make sure the public can.
Building screws.
Yeah, so the audience needs to be able to see Lori talking. So the only way to do that, unfortunately, is to go to this. Does that make sense? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Hopefully, I'll get that answer in a moment. I apologize for interrupting. I just want to make sure everyone can hear this and that it's in the recording and everything.
Yeah, I just checked the YouTube and iPad.
Okay, all right, so it might be. Oh, I'm hearing that it's okay now. So we will chalk it up to some temporary gremlin. Gremlins resolved. Thank you, gremlins. Julianne, Lori, apologize for interrupting you with that. Please go ahead.
Oh, no problem. So the first project that I wanted to talk to you about is the Route 9 sewer extension project. And if I may, I have a map that I would like to share.
Please.
Let's see. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a map of the project area. So right now, the sewer ends at the intersection of Otis and Lawrence Street. It has been a long-term goal of the town to extend sewer to Route 9. That is a goal and an objective that was listed in the 2020 master plan. So an opportunity cropped up several months ago with a project that actually appeared before the zoning board of appeals. So that was when the owner of the Motel 6 was interested in either getting a waiver from having to have an active septic system because he was interested in extending sewer, working with the town on a shared project to extend sewer to Route 9. So his property is identified in green. This motel has been closed down since, I believe, 2021 due to fire, and he is interested in investing approximately $4 million in approving, improving the facility. He did do a Title V to see if the septic system was still functioning, but because the motel has been closed for so long, it was found to be no longer functioning. So he has two options. He could either work towards extending the sewer to his hotel, or he could replace his septic system at a cost of almost $1.4 million. So because this is a long-term goal to extend sewer to Route 9, we saw this as an opportunity for folks to kind of join forces to accomplish this goal. So instead of him spending that money on septic system, we could benefit mutual properties by extending the sewer. So along Lawrence Street, there are approximately 37 property owners that could benefit from the sewer extension. And then along the north side of Route 9, there are seven properties that could benefit. There is, of course, the O'Connell Lodge, which is just off the corner here, which also has some septic system issues. The O'Connell Lodge is fine.
Motel 6.
However, there is a restaurant that has been closed down for a number of years, I believe since 2017. They could also benefit from the sewer extension. However, the length of pipe necessary to hook that property in just seems prohibitive. So the town of Shrewsbury does have a sewer line that ends at the North Borough property line. So we think that a better option for them is to see if they could hook into Shrewsbury system instead of bearing the cost of extending. instead of bearing the cost of extending the sewer line so far and only benefiting one property. So originally, in the cover letter that I provided to you, I was expecting the flows to be significantly less than what this map shows. So this is a work in progress. The engineering is currently underway. And in order to accommodate growth, so there is a large parcel, approximately 21 acres between this brown parcel and this blue parcel that have quite a bit of development potential. So we wanted to make sure that the pump station would be adequately sized to handle any sort of growth that may occur along the corridor, including this parcel right here. So they did end up adjusting the flow up to a little bit more than 100,000 gallons per day. So of course, this is the capacity of the sewer pump station that we're talking about. So the design does envision that the first half to approximately this point, I've got my cursor on that brown parcel, would be gravity sewer. And then the rest of the way would be a force main sewer. So this is a very expensive project. 100% of the design costs would be spared by the owner of the Motel 6. And then the owner of this blue parcel right here is willing to donate a small parcel to accommodate the sewer pump station on her property, free of cost. And she's also willing to donate a cash match to enhance our sewer application. So the costs, originally the costs that they were estimating were in the realm of 1.7 million. I suspect that the costs have increased with the expansion of the gallons per day for the sewer pump station. So I'm still waiting on an updated cost estimate for that. And this project will go before the sewer commissioners tomorrow night for the same purpose of getting a support letter. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that folks might have.
Questions from the board on this grant application, this project, Julianne?
Well, I have a whole bunch of questions, but one is, have the residents and businesses on Lawrence Street been notified of this project?
There are certain business owners that have been notified. I've been trying to get in touch with the owner of the Casa Valerte Mexican Restaurant here. So far, I haven't been successful. They are closed largely due to a failing septic system. So they certainly could benefit from this project. But, you know, at this point, I'm, you know, just looking for support. I don't know if we will get the grant. So, you know, this is, this is a maybe at this point.
So I guess I'm confused. I drove down Lawrence Street today and there's a lot of single-family homes and then businesses interspersed. Will this sewer help everyone on Lawrence Street or just a portion of Lawrence Street?
Yes, I did ask that question because when I saw this map, I was concerned about the residential properties to the north here that are shown in white. And what was explained to me is this map has to do with the flows for the pump station. So it is envisioned that all of these properties would be able to hook in, but they will be gravity fed. So those flows won't go through this sewer pump station. So that's why they're not shown colorfully in this map. But absolutely, everybody who the sewer line would pass by would be eligible to hook in.
But they know about this project or they don't?
They probably don't because this is, like I said, a maybe at this point.
Well, the reason I'm concerned about that is, isn't there a cost to everyone to, when a sewer line goes in and definitely hook up, right?
A betterment fee.
I'm going to let Scott answer that question.
She'll get to that.
Thank you, Lori. I'll lower my hand.
Sorry, the way this room's set up right is right now, I did not see your hand raised.
Oh, okay, all right, I'll just speak up next time then.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Lori, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So betterments are due upon connection regardless of whether the sewer main is, has been there for 50 years or is installed last week. The betterment value doesn't change. A couple of points to help clarify or provide a little bit more information to this board. Lori's correct, the Water Sewer Commission will be hearing this project tomorrow night at their meeting. It's an in-person meeting. The gravity flow will actually service all properties on Lawrence Street. So the uncolored areas would still have access to sewer. It looks like Lori is correct that the flow projections are solely for the pump station. The flow projection being 103,000 gallons per day. I don't know what the additional flow would be if you included all of Hillside as well as the additional gravity properties on the northern section of Lawrence Street. I can let you know that 103 gallons per day accounts to about 45% of our remaining capacity under the NIPSE permit with the city of Marlboro. So again, that accounts for 45% of what we have available for sewer capacity. The Water Sewer Commission engaged a comprehensive wastewater management plan that was developed in 2001 through 2008. What a CWMP does is it evaluates the entire town and identifies areas of sewer need. It has a 20-year projection, which includes things such as build-out, population growth, climate change, which may affect septic systems and the like. This area was identified as a moderate need for sewer eventually. So again, the design is being done by the developer. We have not received any detailed calculations. We received design drawings Friday afternoon and we received this flow projection late this morning. So it has not been reviewed in depth by any staff nor the Water Sewer Commission.
Laura?
Thank you. What is, so I understand there's a 1.7, I think, was the portion of the grant for this. What's the total cost of running sewer to these businesses? And who's going to pay for it?
So that was the estimate that we received, which would be the cost of installing the sewer main as well as the pump station. So like I said, that's an old estimate. So I am anticipating an updated estimate. So if your question is, how much is it going to cost for all of these properties to extend the sewer services? I don't know. That wouldn't be something that would be typically covered by the town in any way.
The cost of...
I'm sorry.
My, the way I interpreted Lori's question is, what is the total cost to the town for this project, both before and after the grant, if we receive the grant?
So what I'm hoping is that if we receive the grant, it will cover 100% of the construction costs.
And so the design costs would normally be borne by the town, but it sounds like the property owners are contributing. You expect 100% of the design costs?
Correct.
Okay.
And then another property owner is contributing a cash match.
Excellent, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, a question, Lori, on the anticipated flows here for the commercial and residential. I was wondering if you could provide more explanation and context to where those numbers and the uses are coming from.
So the uses are specified in this table right here. So all the various colors represent the uses.
Would you have the ability to blow those up a little bit so folks at home can see? Those numbers?
Let's see. Okay, so like the pink area is gas station, hotel, and potential future development is $35,000, I mean, 35,000 gallons per day. So all of these flows were developed by the design engineer.
Okay, and then the specifics. So the commercial restaurant office, residential, 178 two-bedroom units. That's pretty specific. Is that coming from a design that the owner of the property has with a company or with somebody who's drawing that up?
So there is no concept currently for this property here. It's a large undeveloped parcel. So some assumptions were made as to what this property could accommodate. So what we kind of like to do is a worst-case scenario because the last thing we want to do is size a sewer main and a pump station that ends up being too small. So it's always wise to assume development to the maximum. So this property owner is interested in doing a mixed-use development. So a combination of multifamily units and commercial use. But we have not received any plans identifying, you know, what they want to do ultimately.
Okay, so the 178 units, which is a fairly specific number, is just from your estimation of what possibly could go on the site, not...
Yeah, so probably what they did is they looked at the zoning. So, and they maximized it based on the size of the parcel. And this is the maximum that the zoning district would allow.
Gotcha.
TR 16 is the Design Handbook for Gravity Sewer Systems. And when you're doing sewer extensions, the recommendation is to do exactly what Lori explained, is to look at the overlying zoning district as well as any underlying overlays and determine what the maximum potential development would be without variances and waivers and go forward with that under the design. My expectation is with the relatively large flow projection, the Otis Street pump station that is that little brick building just after the bridge and the coffee shop will likely need to be upgraded to accommodate this flow.
Laura?
Will using this grant towards the sewer eliminate our ability to use this grant for sidewalks and other projects for the community?
So MassWorks, the way MassWorks works is that you need to have shovel-ready projects. So they have to be fully designed in order to be eligible. And in order to be competitive, they have to be a partnership, public-private partnership. So they like any projects to be accompanied by a development proposal. So if there is an interest in, say, doing a sidewalk on Maple Street and there's no development proposed for Maple Street, that isn't a strong proposal. So it's unlikely that we would get the grant. And it also has to be fully designed in order to be eligible for the grant. So you can apply for multiple MassWorks grants. So, you know, we could apply for this one this year. And then we could apply for a different one in a couple of years. They do like to spread the money around. So if we apply this year and we get $2 million, I would think that it unlikely that we would get another $1 million next year. So they like to spread it around the state.
From the MassWorks program, but that wouldn't necessarily limit us for other grants that we're talking about, correct?
Correct, there are a whole slew of grants under this Community One Stop for Growth program. So I'm only talking about the MassWorks grant.
That's your question, Laura.
Yeah, I guess one of my thoughts, though, is they're looking to do quite a big development and these businesses are all, you know, have the potential to do these improvements. And I just worry that we're going to use quite a bit of money. I mean, in other projects in town, I believe on West Street, the developers had to pay for that sewer line or the water line. Did the town incur any cost for that? Do you know? For the line that we were just talking about for the three houses that are being built on West Street?
The Public Works Department did not expend any funds toward the West Street water main extension. We did have staff time that was allocated toward reviewing testing procedures and periodic observation of construction. But there were no costs paid for by DPW.
Is that common with development that will work that way? Where we're not paying the money and it's coming, it's just the staff time to review and make sure that it's in compliance?
Well, when you're doing a grant application, then it depends on the grant. Sometimes you're required to have a match. In this circumstance, you're not required to have a match, but it makes for a more competitive grant application. So in this case, the match would be provided by private property owners, not the town. I'm not seeking any money from the town of Northborough for this grant application. It's just my time.
And there would be no, staff would not be able to provide the support needed for a project of this magnitude. It would require construction administration services by an engineering company that is responsible for confirming the work is in accordance with Northborough's requirements.
I guess my confusion is, why would we invest so much staff time and grant money for this project versus other projects in town where developers are building things?
Well, right now, you have a couple of properties that have been closed for a long period of time on Route 9, which is, of course, a primary economic engine for the town of Northborough. And these properties are degrading. They're not really contributing to the tax base. And one is a restaurant, one is a motel. Actually, two restaurants are closed down on Route 9 and one being a motel. So of course, the town is benefiting from the tax associated with, you know, motels and restaurants. And it is creating slum and blight on Route 9. Also, you have some environmentally sensitive areas. So of course, you have a pond. You have an extensive wetland system. And that wetland system goes down to Route 9, it passes under Route 9. So right adjacent to this wetland system, you have a failing septic system. And then you have another failing septic system. So that's causing degradation of the environment. So definitely, it's better to have commercial properties on sewer than on septic system for environmental reasons. So the quality of the groundwater as well as the surface water. But of course, you know, in the master plan, there's quite a bit of talk about economic development. You know, these people are Northborough constituents. So you would be benefiting folks who already are investing in the town of Northborough. And it wouldn't be costing the town of Northborough anything.
Can I just add? I didn't know there was 42 parcels that could connect. So when a septic system fails and there's sewer available within 100 feet, the Board of Health makes you tie in. So these people who have a functioning septic system wouldn't have to unless they have failure. So that's just one important piece. These two parcels closest to Belmont Street, the hotel and the restaurant, in terms of their value, I only looked at those two parcels because I'm looking at the end of the line.
the line. MassWorks wants there to be job creation and value taxes. Since 2021, for example, for Motel 6, they paid $58,000 in taxes, and 24, they paid $37,000. So you have a swing downward, both in value and tax dollars, just for that one parcel. So the reason why I think MassWorks wants you to do a program like this is because you have investment that'll spur tax growth, that'll, that'll allow you to do other things throughout the community, right? You would have money from taxes that could be raised and new growth when these values rebound. And the residential development on the left, it's great to have a, a partner that's willing to put cash and land up. Obviously, that's a pretty significant development if it were to be built to that specification. But again, I didn't do an analysis on the whole parcel, that, on all the parcels of 42, that could tie in and what would happen to their value. But we could do that. Then you get to use those additional funds for sidewalks or anything else, or to pay for police officers' fire. But you, if there's, if this has been identified, the master plan, it's a growth area, that's what MassWorks wants to see in its application, and they also want to see what benefit economically, from a growth standpoint, both jobs and tax dollars that you will get as a result of doing this, from property taxes and meals tax. Your meals and room tax has dropped in the past year, for example, I mean, I can't attribute it to this, but room occupancy was off by 28,000 and 23, and meals, which you used both of those to pay down OPEB liability. The meals, the, the meals tax dropped in 24 by $45,000. So I'm not saying it's that one place, but those are contributing factors to those declining revenues, both in real estate property taxes collected and meals tax, just for those two parcels. So we can do a further in-depth analysis of what the yield could be, if there was sewer there in terms of the values of those properties today versus with sewer. I'm sure we might have to do that anyways in the grant application, Lori, do we? Is there any analysis done for the value?
We don't have to go into that level, level of depth, but there, there are questions asking for the number of jobs that will be created, the value of the investment by the private, private businesses, the commercial development. So they do want, you know, commitment letters from the two private property owners. So, yeah, there, there is quite a bit of information that they're seeking in the grant app.
And I, I know Scott's still on it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just because I was thinking about the 45% of the excess capacity. You know, is there any competition out there that would be better? This was a moderate need. Are there other locations that, if we did that analysis from an economic standpoint, that would be more competitive, and we should allocate that 45% more appropriately than this one?
So the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan was done a long time ago, 2001 through 2007. It's good for 20 years, it's due for an update. It's conservative in its projections. The CWMP originally focused on sewer extensions around our drinking water wells, because at the time, we were still utilizing those wells, and we were not on authority water. So there's a lot of skewing in the analysis. We do have another prospective sewer extension that's been discussed amongst the, the land use boards, I know, and as well as the Water Sewer Commission, and that's on King Street from the, from Times Square, the intersection of Southwest Cut Off and West Main, going up King Street, that little cut-through road, to support a, I believe it's an assisted living facility. I know that project has been, has been discussed for sewer extension. That area is identified as a higher priority. There are other areas that are higher priorities. Generally, if, if you throw out the, the drinking water well proximity properties, and you think about low-lying areas that are on septic, for example, Indian Meadow, that's, that's a very low-lying area, there's high groundwater, they're all on septic. That, if we did another CWMP, that would probably be identified as a, a higher priority, just because those residents are on septics, and it's, it's very, very wet back there. Other neighborhoods or areas, I'm not sure of, but that's just kind of an example.
So this further analysis, to have this competing against other pieces, you know, that, the King Street one, is that just one, you know, how many parcels would be benefited by that one versus this one, or is that? I'm, I'm known.
That project went through the land use boards, I believe, and it's still...
It did. It, it, it is a permitted project, it is in good standing. It is for sale. So I don't know ultimately what the end use will be, it depends on what the buyer is interested in doing. It isn't unusual for folks to get a project permitted and then sell it, and then it becomes something other than what it was originally permitted for. So it may or may not be an assisted living development.
Yeah, and that, that is a very challenging project. I know that through the process of design, there were a lot of difficulties to accommodate what was proposed and ultimately approved.
But nobody from any of those groups were asking us to do a MassWork application for that project, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'm sorry.
And...
I turn to you, I can't turn back.
Yeah, no, that's all right. Just a quick follow-up question, and I saw Mike had his hand up, and then I'll go over to you. The Indian Meadow, for example, purely a residential project, if we did sewer there. So that would probably not be eligible for MassWorks, then, because it's just residential?
Um, it would only be eligible, or really competitive, I'd say, if there was a pending development.
Okay.
So if there was a large residential project, that was either proposed or going through permitting, and there were environmental issues that would kind of necessitate sewer, then it definitely could have a shot there.
But probably Indian Meadow is, is built up, so.
It, it may be worth, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead.
It, it may be worthwhile to explain a little bit of the, the different perspectives in the, in the virtual room. Obviously, the discussion here is about a MassWorks grant to support sewer extension to benefit a, a number of properties, including some, some good tax-earning properties. From a sewer perspective and a sewer commission perspective, it's about providing a need, or addressing the need within a currently served area, or areas that may have, for lack of better terms, unfixable needs. For example, Indian Meadow that we're discussing, if the septic systems start systematically failing in the neighborhood, there, there is no real alternative. It is a sewer extension, period. That's how and where the sewer folks in the room generally look at it from, is we have capacity, where do we want to send it? Unlimited capacity, give me development, you know, promote more customers, more, more, more tax revenue, and more accessible properties. From a limited-capacity perspective, you know, have adequate capacity for the needs of the community.
Thanks.
So the major goals of the MassWork projects, the MassWorks program, is to incentivize housing and to incentivize job creation. So if you have a project, like a sidewalk project, going to an established neighborhood, that's not a competitive project for the MassWorks grants.
Or, or sewer line extension going into an established residential development, same?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Because you're not creating housing, and you're not creating jobs.
Okay, all right. Mike, I think I saw your hand up a little while ago.
Yeah, thanks. So I, I would assume that there is no sewer hookup, sort of similar to the, what you had mentioned with the Econo Lodge near the Shrewsbury Line, for those businesses down there to hook up in Westborough? You know, I know there's, the, the apartment building is right there, so they must be on a, a septic. Walmart is on a septic, there's no sewer connection for, near there for, for, on Westborough property or land?
Walmart is in Northborough, and it's served by Northborough Sewer. The pump station I referred to earlier, down by the, the dam and the bridge, the little brick building, that was actually constructed by Walmart when they extended sewer up Otis Street to their facility.
Okay, so there is existing sewer all the way down Otis Street to Walmart?
That is correct. One of the earlier options that this landowner was considering was going through the woods cross-country to connect up to the Walmart extension, but from discussions, I believe, he was running into difficulties working with Walmart and considering the size of their, their company. I'm not, I'm not surprised if that was a difficult endeavor.
Okay, and are you, I mean, is it possible to run sewer under, if there's sewer across Route 9 in, in Westborough? You, I guess you can't run a sewer line under an existing road like Route 9.
Probably could.
It is, it is feasible.
Okay, do we know if there's sewer across the street?
I don't, I don't know that.
Across Route 9?
I don't know that.
We don't know, okay. And then... And then since we're, you, you said we wouldn't be paying for the design or anything like that, so we wouldn't have a say in that process, or would we? Sort of where would we have oversight or say in the design and the construction if we're looking to get it paid for by the businesses with cash matches and this grant?
They're going to build the line specification, Scott will tell.
Okay.
So all the facilities being proposed would be municipal facilities at the end of the project. All the work needs to comply with design standards for sewer construction and design TR-16, roadway construction, mass DOTs, roadway construction standards. The pump stations would be, would conform with our standard Smith &amp; Lovell's pump station design. This would be, it, it's, it's an odd structure for a project, but it would be built as if it was a municipal construction project, because every piece of infrastructure installed would become ownership, would become owned by, by, by the Water Sewer Commission. So they want to be sure that everything is built, it's built right, and it's, it's compliant with all the standards and regulations necessary.
Okay, and then just also curious, when, when is the last time we've gotten, I, I don't know how long this, this grant's been around with, through MassWorks, but have we ever gotten one before? Or how often we have, if we've gotten them in the past?
I can't speak to that. I've only been here for two years.
There hasn't been one awarded, and I don't believe applied for in my eight years here.
You all set, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm, I'm good for now, thanks.
The work on, on Cedar Hill in Marlborough, that was a MassWorks grant, by the city of Marlborough, not Northborough.
We tried to do that.
So we do, we do.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we're due. Laura?
What happens if we don't get this grant? Who's going to pay for that $1.7 million?
So there are a couple of different options. Chances are, the owner, the Motel 6 will install a septic system at his cost, $1.4 million. That doesn't help the Casa Valletta restaurant at all. I understand that their septic system is super expensive, and they can't afford to replace it, so they will remain closed unless they're able to sell the property. Chances are at a loss because of the lack of sewer, lack of, lack of septic. So the property owner here, if they're interested in proceeding with this mixed-use development, in order to get a significant number of units, they would have to extend sewer, and they would do that at their cost. Or they could do a reduced number of units, and then they'd be on a septic system. I, I am concerned about the proximity of this property to this pond. And as you can see, there's wetlands and streams that go by, so that wouldn't be ideal to have a septic system sized to accommodate a larger development.
In, in addition to that, to expand a little bit on, on Lori's description, the hillside properties are all very small camp-style parcels, and they're all on septic. It's, I'm sure that's a, a struggle for a lot of those property owners to, you know, sell their properties, or improve them, or, you know, add bedrooms to them. Those are very tight lots on septic systems. There are a few at the end of the road where the septic system is actually across the street.
Lisa?
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. The first thing is that, one of the things that, that I heard Lori say was, this was in the master plan as a growth area. Is there enough space there? I mean, what, what would we do? Is it just the big blue parcel, the, the one that's shown over here that would take all those apartments? Is that, is that what would be considered part of that plan?
So this area is a mixture of different zoning districts. So some, this portion up here, in, in white, is, for the most part, zone residential C, which is largely a single-family district. And then the rest is a combination of highway business and Business South. So Business South does allow industrial uses, so there are a number of, you know, industrial distribution-type uses on Otis Street. So there are parcels that are underutilized currently, so they could be developed to a greater extent. So there, there could be additional development potential than what currently exists.
But that would be something that, that's pretty far in the future for one of the, for even for the grant, wouldn't it be? Because aren't you supposed to be, the grant's supposed to be used for new growth, not, not rehabbing like?
Well, this is also elimination of slum and blight. So we do have some issues on Route 9 with slum and blight. So it is certainly a tool for economic development, creation of jobs. Right now, we have properties that are vacant, so they have buildings on them, but nobody in them. So that would be seen, in my opinion, as a benefit to the grant. And then, of course, we have this, this large parcel with development potential.
But just, just, just to clarify a little bit, there's five rectangular buildings up Otis Street from Walmart, running, running north. All five of those properties do have access to sanitary sewer on Otis Street, and I believe two of them are connected. The other ones have not connected yet, but I know two of them have connected.
Okay, I'd like, I guess we, I want to go back to on the, the people who are living on Lawrence presently. What would their betterment fee be, and what would their tie-in cost be?
The betterment fee is $9,100 per residential unit. There would be a $50 connection to sewer fee, a $50 road opening fee, and a $50 trench fee. So $9,100 plus $150 in addition to the cost to connect.
In addition to the cost to connect?
Yes, and that's, that's currently on the, on the, on the books now, so if anybody wanted to connect anywhere in town, that's, those are the costs.
Okay, but what, so when there's, so what is that connection cost? Is there like a percentage?
I have no idea. I have no idea. It's up to the contractor. I mean, if your house is 300 feet up the hill, or 30 feet up the hill, the cost is drastically different.
Okay, so the...
The average cost of a new septic system is about $30,000 plus.
Okay, so I guess my next, my next concern is that we, I would look maybe somewhere else to see if we could develop, since we're going to be looking at really cutting down on our, our sewer capacity, that's going to be something we have to start to, to consider. That if we use it up in this space, could we have used it better somewhere else? I know you've got the MBTA areas that are already set aside, and I would imagine that if they were down, in some areas, you have to use sewer connections there that aren't built yet.
Utilization of the remaining sewer capacity would, would, will, will be a focus for the Water Sewer Commission, and is under their, their purview on... the Water Sewer Commission and is under their, their purview on, on where that capacity should be allocated.
So can I, can I just ask a question that you brought up about connections? If it's not, I said this before, but if they're not failing and this pipe runs by, do they have to tie in?
No.
For them to tie in unless they're in failure.
But they would have to pay the betterment fee right, either right away or, or start a good new.
No, no, if you pay the betterment fee when you connect, they can, they have the option to pay a betterment fee today, and 20 years later when they connect, it's already paid. And if 20 years from now, the betterment goes up to $18,000, they've already, they've already paid it for $9,100. There are many residents in town that have paid their betterments when sewers went past their home for, you know, $3,800, and they're now $9,100. So when they come for a connection permit, they do not need to pay the betterment. It's already been paid.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, in going back in history with Northborough Crossing, when that-
I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm having a real hard time hearing you. I wonder if you could just speak into the microphone more?
I was gonna say that the, going back in some history, when Northborough Crossing was built, the sewer lines were run by the developer, and it rained down Davis Street as well, and they paid the betterment fee for all the people that were gonna have it run in front of their house on. So that was a great benefit to those people on the street, although they did have to pay a charge to connect, which was higher than what it is here now. Concerned about the residents who are living on Lawrence, that it's not gonna be something that they could easily afford. It's a big, it's a big jump. I mean, I suppose if you did a straw poll and, and found out each one of them, if they were interested, that would be a better way to go. But, you know, I'm concerned about using that, using this grant for that area.
So all right, I do see one hand up from the audience. We could, we could go to that, and then actually two hands up from the audience, and we'll come back to questions from the board. Brad Blanchett, I'm bringing you in. If you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind for this.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chair. Brad Blanchett, Six Rodney Terrace, Northborough. Just to throw it out there, I'm also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I'm not coming to you guys with opinion for the whole board. I'm just coming here as a resident tonight. I, I wanted to follow up on, well, a couple of questions. First, I want to follow up on what Ms. Vizzelli has, has said. I know you were talking about the betterment cost of $9,100, but, I mean, is, yeah, has a poll been done with these folks on Lawrence Street if they do want to tie in? And I'd love to know the total cost it would cost each resident to tie in beyond the $9,100. The second piece is, honestly, the Motel Six has caused this town a lot of problems. They honestly have a rap sheet of crimes that are committed on that property, and to use valuable finite grant money that could be better used in another part of town, I wouldn't, honestly would not do any favors to the Motel Six at all, especially tying in sewer. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. We have one more hand up from Scott Rogers. Scott, I will allow you to talk. Scott, if you could unmute, identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind, please.
Yeah, good evening. Scott Rogers at 26 Tomahawk Drive. So to understand the financial picture from residents' perspective, it'd be something on the order of $30,000 to replace the septic system, but $92,500 plus some contractor costs to connect to sewer. Am I understanding that right?
Correct.
So this seems like a big win for the residents on Lawrence Street. If their sewers, if their septic system fails, they've got then an option that is a third of the cost of what they'd face if they had a failure currently. I think you've already talked about reducing the risk to the wetlands in the area, and our town administrator articulated the benefit from a revenue perspective of having both property that's back in use, which increases its value, provides increased property taxes, as well as businesses that have the additional surcharges for lodging and meals, and we'd get those tax revenues as well. And as he outlined, this then becomes revenue that can be used for other projects. So I'd very, I'd urge the board to please support this project, get these businesses back up and running, and get the enhanced capabilities that would come to the motel and the vision that owner has to turn it from a different type, into a different type of establishment that would be, have a much better reputation, and a wonderful restaurant that hasn't been in business for a long time. So I just urge to get the businesses back up and running, do the right thing for the residents to reduce their outlay for, if there's a septic failure, and to do something that aligns in the right section of town in the area that we're trying to encourage some commercial growth. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. I've got a couple of questions. The, mentioning the Motel Six, as, as one of the caller brought up, it's, I know it's been a, an occasional concern, to say the least, in the past. A number of months ago, I asked Diane about, you know, whether we would need to permit anything for them to reopen, and she said, yeah, we would need to issue a new inholder license. That's something that this board does before they could reopen again as a motel. My, a question for Julianne, since you've been the one to speak with that property owner. I appreciate their interest in putting some money into this, that it would be a net savings to them of a substantial amount of money. If they spend $200,000 or $300,000 on design, that's a lot less than $1.4 million for a septic system. Have they given any indication to you that they'll invest that difference into their building to make it a better facility?
They, they are interested in investing $4 million in upgrades. So that's the figure that I received from the property owner.
Okay.
We, we had some meetings early on with the owner before COVID came through and hit the pause button, and he'd indicated he was looking for a little more of a Holiday Inn, Express, or so, so, something a little more oriented toward business travelers, is how we, how we put it.
That's good to hear. I think that's something the board would have, have interest in hearing more about, you know, whether or not that would tie into approving, you know, going forward with this grant or not. We'll, we'll decide that shortly. Do we, what's the, is there a deadline on applying for this grant, or is this a rolling process?
Yes. No, all three grants are due on June 5th. So I want to submit them a couple of days in advance. There are a lot of moving parts to doing an online grant submission, so I don't want to leave it to the last minute and run the chance of there being any technical issues.
Okay, nothing, nothing like the last minute. Does applying for the grant bind us to going forward with the project if the grant is funded?
No.
Okay.
The town just wouldn't sign the contract.
Okay. What is the turnaround time for the grant roughly? How long after submission do you hear?
I would expect to hear around October, November timeframe.
Okay, so five, six months. Is, does water already run to all of these properties?
Yes.
Yeah, I assume so.
Well, I'm sorry. Let me correct that. Water runs to all the properties with the exception of those to the west of the Lawrence Belmont Street intersection. Mass DOT is proposing to extend a water line at their expense along that section. So it's an orange parcel, light blue, and sort of a light purple, those three parcels?
Yep.
Mass DOT is proposing to extend a water line at their expense to serve those parcels due to salt issues with their drinking water wells.
Okay. Nice of them to put the bill on that. I, my, my biggest concern is similar to Lisa's, that of using, you know, once you add in the residential properties here, 50% or more of our added capacity. That's something I would want to fully understand before moving forward with any commitment to construction. You know, I appreciate that a lot of those decisions are under the purview of the Water Sewer Commission, you know, if and when they have a priority list for where they would want to essentially spend that capacity. That's something the board would be, I'm certain, very interested in. You know, using 50% in one project would be, would be good. Scott, I see a blurry hand up.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to get it, so it's not in the-
Yeah, no, I get it.
There it is.
There we go.
So just to hit the rewind button a little bit on the project, when we were talking early on with the hotel developer, we were looking at the hotel and some associated parcels up the, well, the associated parcels up the hill, and it was in the 50,000 to 60,000 gallons per day range, and the large development, residential development parcel came on board late in the, in the process, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, it's, it's somewhat of a recent engagement. So, you know, it wasn't a, a blind, here's 103,000 gallons per day, let's go forward. It, it doubled in a, in kind of in a blink of an eye over about two weeks.
Yes, I had been contacted by the property owner a couple of months ago, maybe a month ago, about her interest in doing a mixed-use development there. So that's how it came on to my frame of reference. There was another commercial proposal that had been proposed for that parcel, and that ended up falling apart. So the, the original proposal would have, they were also interested in running sewer to the property, but it would have been a much smaller user than a residential development would be.
Okay, sorry. I'm seeing hands up. I did not see whose hand up when I went first.
Laura. Thank you. So you mentioned public-private partnership, which I love. I love that idea, but I don't really see how, like, I mean, can we get sidewalks in another part of town? Can we, you know, they, they result in parks, like, public-private partnerships bring something else to the community. I recognize what you're saying from a tax revenue and the blighted and slum neighborhood area, but I just wonder, like, public-private partnership brings more back to the community, and I'm not really sure that this is gonna bring a lot back to the community for that amount of money that is going to people that are gonna profit off of it.
The, the benefit is that all of these people who would not otherwise have access to sewer will have access to sewer. So that is the public benefit, is that you would be providing sewer to more than 45 properties who otherwise wouldn't have sewer. So the benefit is to the environment, because like I said, failing septic systems are terrible for water quality. So those are the benefits. The sidewalks are, well, in my opinion, are much less of a benefit than what you would be getting from this project.
Okay. Mike, did you have your hand up also?
Yeah, I did. So, so a, as you had kind of said before, that large purple spot with, with the projected residential and commercial, that was the property where there was a possible commercial development, but it had fallen through, that you referenced earlier? Is that, do I have that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess, kind of, one of my concerns is there's a lot of empty commercial space, just not in Northborough, but across the Commonwealth, the Northeast, the whole country. So I guess where I have a, one concern is, if I was to develop that to make it successful, I'd want to put in residential and not commercial, because I don't know if I'm gonna be able to rent that commercial. And this isn't within the MBTA zoning, so this would be on top of any possible MBTA development. You know, maybe it wouldn't be 175 units, but even if it was 100 or 150, that's a lot of people to add, and a lot of kids to add to the school system, which, you know, not, not, not to, to get off topic, but, you know, ask anybody on the school committee, you know, we're at capacity. You know, this is on top of any additional capacity we would get from a successful MBTA development. So that is one, I, I, I would love to get sewer to these businesses and to those residents up there. I mean, they're pretty close to Otis Street. I don't know how much it would cost to just extend sewer on our dime to just the, the residential houses up there, but that's, that's sort of my, my main concern. And then to kind of answer some of the questions, I did tie in to the Northborough sewer in 2013 in the Pine Haven neighborhood. At that time, I believe it was around 2,500-ish for the contractor to actually complete the connection. So, you know, add 10 years and, and, you know, increase costs on that. You know, maybe it's around the same amount, but, you know, it is cheaper than, than doing a septic system. But there is still the, the betterment, and then, you know, maybe a couple thousand, $3,000 of additional cost to actually get the connection completed. So, yeah, that's just my, my, I guess, comments and answering a question as best I could.
If I can just speak to that. So this parcel is located within the Business South District. So most residential uses are not allowed. The only way you can do any sort of residential development is if it's part of a mixed-use development. So that would be a mixture of commercial and residential use. Other than that, there are a host of industrial uses that are allowed. Manufacturing, warehousing would be allowed on this parcel, as well as a number of commercial uses. So that is the vast majority of, you know, what you could see on this property. Once again, you know, I, I'm concerned about this pond over here. So a straight residential is a prohibited use.
One more question. If we didn't move forward with the grant funding for this project, you have to, you have a very tight window coming up on June 5th. Are there any other projects that are Plan B, C, and D?
No, I have one week, essentially. So if, if you folks are not supportive of this project, I will not apply for a Mass Works grant.
And this is an, an annual application?
Shovel-ready project. We have no other shovel-ready projects good to go.
And this is an annual grant cycle?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so when you say shovel-ready, it's shovel-ready because we have a design being developed?
Correct, it's fully designed.
Okay, so-
Or it, it could be in, in a process of being designed. Like, this project, by the time I submit the grant, will most likely be at the 50% design stage. So that's okay, as long as it's gonna be 100% design by the time, if we were to get the grant. So by the time of contract signing, it has to be 100% designed.
So your cover letter says it will be done by November, but you, when did you say we would hear about the grant?
I suspect in November. So I, I put that in the cover letter to coincide with when the results come out. Sometimes it's October, sometimes November, sometimes December. I don't really know for sure.
Okay, and I just need a couple of points clarified before we discuss this. Tim, you said that we lost $45,000 in meals tax and hotel fees, just from those two properties?
Nope. This is overall. I can't pull out them. All I have is those two parcels for property taxes, so I can tell you what they were in '21 versus what they are now. So the Motel Six paid $58,961 in 2021. In '24, they paid $37,202.
And their property tax went down because their value went down?
The value was at 3.4 million, now it's down to 2.6 million.
Okay.
So that's, that's indicative of that. The, the other one is the restaurant. In '21, they paid $17,032, and in '24, they paid $15,665.
Okay.
And then the meals and the room stacks were just globally for the entire community. These attribute, there's no way for me to know how much. These attribute, there's no way for me to know how much they contributed to that, but they, they were off in two years, '23 and '24.
Well, yeah. Okay, so another quick question. The owner of the hotel says that he's going to invest $4 million into the hotel. Does, does this person have financing already? I mean, is this just a promise, or?
He's already filed a building permit application, which is under review by the building inspector, and he has already received approval for a septic system design from the Board of Health. So this, he provided me with cost estimate, well, it's actually quotes from his contractor. So those numbers should be good.
No, I don't, I don't understand. He's going to invest $4 million into the building to have this nice hotel?
Correct.
Does, how do we know he has that money?
If, if he doesn't do the sewer hookup, then he will invest another 1.4 million in a septic system. So instead of it being $4 million investment, it'll be a $5.4 million investment.
So either way, he's moving ahead with, with a hotel?
Correct.
And?
So this, this was an opportunity to comply with 2020 master plan goal and objective, as well as to bring a benefit to all of the property owners along Lawrence Street and Belmont Street, to make their properties more valuable. So that is the benefit.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments or questions on this one? We still have two others. Do, do we want to informally decide whether or not we support this one now before we move on to the next? Do we want to decide that at the end with the other two?
I think we should take it one by one. I might forget all the details.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I tend to agree. We can, the motion was inclusive of all, but we could modify that if, if by consensus we, we are not in favor of this. So thoughts on moving forward with this grant? Again, I appreciate, Laurie, what you said, that applying for the grant does not bind us to do the construction. So in theory, that gives us a few months to do some other research to determine whether the entirety of the project is still good for the town, how the increase in usage of capacity of sewer impacts long-term sewer use, particularly what that, that motel might look like in the future, and what the, the risk factors are, if you will, of that building relative to its operations in the past. So there are, there are, there's still some opportunity for discussion on this. Mike?
Just a question. So would those questions and answers, would those be coming before the board, or is this something that, if we were to approve the grant, then get the funding, but still wanted to say no, that would be a yes or no at town meeting?
So this would not need to go to town meeting, because there's no town, there's no money being appropriated for this.
Okay.
I, my opinion is that if we do move forward with the grant, we make that contingent upon board approval before construction begins. Just to make it really clear that we need to be involved in that, because we obviously have some questions and concerns with this. I don't know procedurally. My gut feeling is without that, we probably would not be. I think the Water Sewer Commission has ultimate authority over most aspects of the sewer extension itself. Am I right, Scott?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I would suggest if there is a motion to approve with contingencies, there would be a contingency to include, I would ask, there's a contingency to have Water Sewer Commission approval prior to engage in the contract.
Select board and Water Sewer Commission.
Yes, correct.
Yes, yes.
Just add, add Water Sewer Commission to that.
That does, that does make a lot of sense.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
While we're waiting, Laurie, if, if we got the grant and we, you know, after getting more information, think it's not a good idea to use it there, how will that look to the people who are giving the grants?
Probably not great.
Okay, yeah.
You know, but then they'd be able to potentially fund another project that they had originally rejected. But it, it may impact our ability to get a grant in the future.
In the future, meaning you think that, that contingency here could, I appreciate, maybe it would impact their response to this grant application, but to some other future grant application?
They're going to forget about us as soon as we say.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Right.
Yeah.
If we tell them, well.
If they went through the, the approval process, and they approved the town of Northborough for the grant, I, I would guess, you know, if I was a reviewer, if the town said, forget it, you know, we just, we don't want to go forward with the project, it might look a little weird.
Okay.
But that's just my guess. Of course, I've never sat on a review board of any of these grant applications, so I, I don't know for sure. I'm just guessing.
Appreciate that. Other thoughts? Laura?
So I appreciate the thought you've put into this. I wish we had a lot more time to have reviewed it. I love the idea of doing public-private partnership. I love the idea of identifying projects that were outlined in the master plan. I would rather if we did it as a collaborative approach and not being reached out, it feels kind of last minute by developers to use this money. And if there's a risk that if we don't go forward, I, my, my gut would be, let's postpone a year, and let's spend some time and figure out what we can do from a public-private partnership that'll benefit the whole community.
Like I said, there has to be a development proposal. So, you know, those don't come along, they usually don't come to me and say, in five years, I want to do a, a development, so therefore, you know, I'm going to give you this period of time to plan for it. That doesn't typically happen. So I might get a couple of months heads up, but chances are, if we don't go forward, we're going to miss the boat, because the Motel 6 is going to install a septic system. So this, this is pretty much our one opportunity to go forward at this time in order to extend the sewer to Route 9.
I understand. I just would, I don't feel that, given the timeline, I understand what you're saying. We've approved MBTA communities. We're going to have some other developments that are going to be coming up, and I would prefer it if we, as a board, could take a more collaborative approach to what we can apply for that'll benefit the entire community.
Thanks, Laura. Question for you, Julian. Why, I don't why I keep, I look over here and I, Laurie, question for you. I think the entire board learned about this potential project at town meeting in a response to a question about, I think, the MBTA process and grant applications and things like that. When did the town begin working, work on this?
So we met with the developer of the, the owner of the Motel 6 quite a while ago. I want to say maybe about a year ago.
Okay.
And it was around the time that the Mass Works was due last year, if I remember correctly. And at that time, you know, I had mentioned the possibility of a Mass Works grant, but it wasn't looking like the timing was going to work out for him. And then in the fall, he submitted a variance application, and he was thinking, maybe he was interested in the sewer, or maybe he was interested in the septic system. Ultimately, I think around January timeframe, he informed me that he was going to go forward with the septic system. So I thought this project was dead at that time. So then he contacted me maybe about a month and a half ago, two, maybe two months ago, and said that the timing may work out for him after all. He'd be willing to pay for the design of the sewer, and also, that was around the time when I had met with the other property owner. Like I said, originally, there was a commercial development proposed there. That was when I was informed that the commercial development had evaporated, and that they were interested in maybe doing the mixed use development. So it seems like a good opportunity to partner on a really good competitive Mass Works application. So that's, you know, laying of the groundwork has taken some time. That was around the time of the town meeting, so this is kind of the way it works in the development world.
Okay.
Opportunities arise, and you got to kind of jump on them. Otherwise, they pass you by, and they may or may not come up again.
I think for, for future reference, and I appreciate during much of that time, we had a series of interim town administrators. Keeping the town administrator and asking the town administrator to keep the board involved and aware of these upcoming projects is helpful, so that we are not surprised at town meeting, and people start asking us questions, but what's this sewer line extension that's being talked about? And we can just, at that point, shrug our shoulders. I'd rather be able to answer those questions and be able to point people to documentation on the website or recorded meetings to learn more. So that's going to, advice for, for future, future processes. With that, other, other members of the board, in terms of thoughts?
Oh, I have a question. How much is the design costing the hotel owner?
Somewhere in the realm of 100 grand, I believe.
100,000. And then from the other possible mixed use, we're getting 100,000 and land donated. So that's the private contribution. And when, when we talk about other possible projects, did Scott say that, for example, King Street could be a, a possible project for, for our grant like this?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if I was misunderstood. Again, I was speaking from the sewer perspective and capacity, available capacity, not from a Mass Works grant perspective. There were two sewer extensions that have been discussed over the past couple of years. One is Lawrence Street, and one is King Street. I was not inferring that King Street would be a Mass Works prospective grant application. It was just regarding the capacity conversation.
That development was approved with a sewer line, so that developer would bear the cost of extending the sewer to his property.
I imagine the capacity of that would be a lot lower than this one. I'm, I'm sorry.
I have a procedural question. This, this affects every business in person on Lawrence Street and Route, all those businesses on Route 9. Why is this not a public hearing?
I imagine because.
Because this is, this is only a support letter I'm asking for.
This isn't a.
Yeah, but then if you apply for the grant, and we have a public hearing, and there's reasonable objections.
Would, would a public hearing be required for even the construction of this?
That would be under the Sewer Commission.
Okay.
So the Board of Selectmen would not approve this.
There would be no public hearing.
Okay.
Required for the sewer extension, no.
Right. Okay. Yeah. I think because there's no required impact to those property owners, there would be a, a benefit where they could tie into the sewer, but no requirement that they tie into the sewer.
But it would be a huge benefit potentially to some of those businesses, which would, would then increase activity on the street. And we haven't even talked about the impact on Otis Street, which in my opinion is one of the weirdest streets to navigate in town.
Yeah, not so much.
If you have 100 extra people and.
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
If you have a, if there's a development proposal, it'll be either permitted by the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Planning Board, and at that time, there will be a public hearing. Right now, there is no development proposal. The Motel 6 already exists. It's a byright use. He's upgrading his facility, so he's not changing anything that would trigger site plan approval. So that's why there's no public hearing.
Okay. I think if we do go forward with this, I think it would be a good idea to one way or another notify all of the property owners that would be impacted by this, so that they're aware that this is coming, because, for example, one of them may be needing to, you know, think that they might need to upgrade their sewer system, or might be planning for future development, septic system, or planning for some future project or anything else, and this might impact their options. So they should be aware of that. Not, not saying we do.
I'd be happy to send out a letter.
Yeah. Just for practice. Lisa?
I think we should get their information first, before, before agreeing to moving along with this. Get a better understanding of what people are thinking about up there. Because as long as, even though it's a benefit factor for them to be able to tie into a sewer line, there's also the monthly cost of paying for the sewer charges, and these are, these are escalating amounts of money that there may be people that, that are not in that position to do that, regardless of if it would make their property more valuable. Right now, they have to live in the here and now.
Right.
And I think that street especially has.
I think, but what we have heard tonight is that if their septic system is working.
Or they don't, I know.
Then, then they can continue to use it until it fails.
Yes, but that, so I mean, it doesn't have anything to do with the value of the land or anything else like that.
Right, right.
The benefit factor, the potential benefit factor of the reality of the benefit factor. So, yeah, that's.
This is a tremendous benefit to the property owners, because the cost of sewer hookup is significantly less than septic system.
But then you don't pay every month.
And the property owner can decide. The property owner can replace their septic system with another septic system.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
That's up to them.
I think, I'm just saying that I think we should, before we make decisions, we should know more.
Yeah.
Ask, ask generally what the public is thinking, because there's other places we're going to need this, and it's very important to start planning a future where we know where these things are actually going to be used.
I think we're, we're bound by time, unfortunately, with this. When you said June 5th is the application deadline?
June 5th.
June 5th, so I mean.
Like I said, I'd like to submit a couple of days in advance, so on the 3rd.
It's like two weeks from now.
Yeah.
But it's still nothing we saw before. I don't, I don't, we rush all the time. We rush because of deadlines. I prefer not to do that, and.
Yep, I, I agree.
And I see, I mean, I, I looked, I printed out Mass Works in 2022 and 23 awards, and the, the amount of work that went into how many different towns bought, you know, got grants, and the amount of grants is huge. There's one grant be used to fund improvements in the intersection of Oak Street and Chestnut Street, will include replacement of traffic signs, lights, utility poles, roadway pavement, as well as new concrete sidewalks and other land, landscaping and street scape improvements. I'd love to be able to use some of these, this grant money for that sort of thing. I think that's what the master plan has been crying about in the beginning, and.
Yeah.
I just thought I'd throw that out there.
I think we should be preparing ourselves to apply for Mass Works grants every year.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. Even understanding if they give us one, you know, a couple million dollars one year, they might want, not want to hear from us for a couple of years, we should just keep applying. Yeah, I think we can come up with qualified projects shortly. Between now and June 5th, we're not going to come up with any others than this.
But just remember that they have to be shovel-ready, which means that the town would have to pay for the design of projects every year.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should, especially if they haven't gotten a sidewalk yet, start working on some. I think we should, especially if they haven't gotten a sidewalk yet, start working on some design work.
Mike?
One last question. Would, just curious, would something like the Blake Street project that I've heard, watching select board meetings, would that be eligible for something like this? And would that be considered shovel-ready?
Only if there's a development project associated with it. But yes, I have received a Massworks grant for downtown revitalization, street scape improvements, but it was associated with a private development.
But, so for example, you're talking, earlier tonight, if conceivably, we issued, say, an RFP or something like that for 4 West Main Street, that might generate a potential economic development project that would be adjacent to Blake Street, that could potentially be combined. Could, that could be the, the project associated with Blake Street, street scape improvement.
Could be, yes.
I wish we had received this earlier, you know, by a good, a good month or so. Appreciate, we are, we are where we are, that we, we, I think we have to decide this tonight, or, or it is decided for us. My, my own, I, I think there are substantial benefits being talked about here to a number of commercial and some residential property owners that would, we wouldn't even worry about getting our money back in property tax revenue, because we're not putting any money into this. But we would see increased property tax revenue, we would see hopefully better, hopefully better use of that motel. That's a subject of, you know, another issue. And the restaurant that's been closed so long, you know, could reopen as a result of this, and other properties could be improved. So my inclination is, I think it's mostly a good thing, but honestly, I like the idea of having the contingency in there that this board and the Water Sewer Commission give final approval before construction starts, if we go forward with the grant and if we receive the grant. My thinking is that would then force the issue of having those discussions between now and then. And I think we'd have the time and have the interest in doing that. And Laura, I suspect you would like the air conditioning.
I'm okay, I'll wait.
I'll go turn it off now.
I'm worried everybody else is going to be like boiling in here. Thank you.
So we're, we're talking about the great benefit of this possible sewer line. It could, couldn't it conceivably be a great benefit to all the businesses that are interspersed between the, the private homes, single-family homes? And all of a sudden, then, they're seeing more, you know, they could expand, and there's more activity on the street, and there's more activity on Otis Street, and then that large apartment complex or mixed-use development or something? This is drastically, or could drastically, change the quality of life for, for that entire, like, neighborhood. And maybe, probably more than just Lawrence Street. When, when you think about cars coming out onto Otis as well. And they're going to use it, because when you go down to Route 9, you, you know, unless you're heading towards Worcester, you're gonna, you're gonna go back the other way. I, I don't know, for me, I, this is just such a rush, I, and, and if we find out more and, and say, gosh, you know, this is not going to work, we're, you know, we're probably really setting ourselves back with the Massworks people. So I, I don't know, I'm, I'm concerned about this. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the minimum lot size is the same, regardless of whether there's sewer or not. So each of those zoning districts have a certain minimum lot size, they have a certain lot coverage requirement, they have an open space requirement, and that doesn't change whether there's sewer or not.
All right, let's, let's try to end this item now, and we, we're not voting on this yet, but a rough show of hands, how many people of us five would like to support this grant application, with or without contingencies? Raise a hand. And I might be the only one to raise a hand. I think I'm the only one to raise my hand. Okay. So I, I think we have our answer. We're not going to go forward with this one. It will not be part of the motion a little bit later. Appreciate work on this, Lori. All right, let's move along to the, to the next grant.
All right.
I think we lost Scott in the process, but maybe that's intentional.
Um, so the next project, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we hear you fine.
Yes, Lori.
Okay, so the next project is just shy of $75,000 scope of work for architectural services associated with developing the construction documents for the demolition of the 1960s additions on White Cliffs, as well as buttoning up the building in a temporary way while the town figures out what they want to do with White Cliffs once and for all. So I do have another map. Actually, you gotta click on the other one. So White Cliffs. So the White Cliffs mansion, for those who don't know, it's approximately 7.1 acres of land located on Route 20. It's to the north of the intersection with Brigham Street. It's located approximately half mile from 4 West Main Street, which is pretty much the core of the downtown area. So I do think we have a pretty good shot of getting this, this grant. One of the, the benefits of going with the pre-development grant option, so there are two, two different aspects to this underutilized properties grant. So there's a pre-development component, and there's a construction component. You can't apply for both, so it's either one or the other. However, in my experience, if you're able to get the pre-development grant, it sets you up really well for getting a construction grant the following year. So that is the strategy that I want to go forward with. This, this work would take about six months to complete. So the grant awards would be made probably around the same timeframe, the November timeframe. And then they would want us to start within two months of the grant award. So I would envision that work would start in January, and then we should be complete or nearly complete for the next year's funding round. So next year, I'd be interested in applying for a million-dollar grant. I will need matching funds from the town. So I'm interested in applying for CPC money. So I plan on submitting a grant application to the CPC in fall for their consideration. So ideally, we would have $1,250,000 to work with, 250,000 being the match. And that would enable us to not only do the demolition, buttoning up the building in a temporary way, but also address some of the environmental hazards that are there on the property. Of course, there's an issue with lead paint, mold and mildew is an issue. There is a fuel tank in the basement. So there's an abundance of things that we could tackle once those additions are off. So does anybody have any questions?
Questions on this, Julia?
So Lori, are you saying that if this underutilized building grant funds the design, they will look more favorably on the next application, as opposed to, like, if we came up with $75,000 to fund the design, that, is that what you're saying?
In my experience, when I have applied for pre-development money, and then I have applied for construction money, I've always gotten the construction money. So I don't always get the pre-development money. But that has been the track record that I've had. Of course, never say never. You know, it could, could change. But I do believe that we will be positioned well to get the next year's round. And if we don't, so say this year, we don't end up getting the underutilized properties grant, then there still would be the opportunity to use ARPA funds, although definitely, we'd be getting down to the, down to the wire on spending those funds. But then we would be set up for the same exact deadline of the first week of June for the next year's funding round. So it doesn't matter whether it's paid for with the underutilized properties grant, or it's paid for with ARPA. I still have a first week of June 2025 grant deadline. So it won't help or hurt to get this grant or to use ARPA funds to fund, fund this work.
That's your question?
Well, I, I guess really, we don't, we're not sure, right? We're not sure that if, if this grant funds the design, we have a substantially better chance at getting the construction grant.
What you could do is if, so you could program the $75,000 regardless. So you could plan on putting $75,000 towards funding design, or you could plan to put $75,000 towards funding demolition. So you could program that $75,000 with ARPA funds regardless. And then, should we end up getting the grant, then I could reduce my CPC ask by that $75,000. So instead, I'd just apply for 175,000.
I'll let the others ask any questions, then you can come back to me.
Okay.
So question, the, the size of the grant, right, obviously smaller than, say, the last one we were talking about for a while, about the sewer. Lori, is it a pretty good, I don't know if you have a, a good barometer on, you know, because of that amount, it's a good chance it would get approved? And if it wasn't, would that funding either, as you've been saying, have to come either approved by the board from ARPA, or would have to go to town meeting for approval? That might think you'd be correct.
Yeah, I mean, if it goes to town meeting for approval, unless you're, you're putting it on the town meeting warrant for fall, then it, it wouldn't arrive in sufficient time for us to apply for next year's round of underutilized properties grant. So my recommendation is either we go forward with this application, which I've already written, so it's pretty much good to go, or you plan on finding, funding it with ARPA.
From my perspective, I don't see any, any downside to this at all. We're applying for a grant. We've already, you've already done the work for the grant. All we're doing is writing a letter to say, yes, please give us the money. I, I agree with Lori that getting us into that system now only improves our chance of getting substantial funding later for White Cliffs. My hope is that they see this, they, you know, take a look at White Cliffs, see some pictures. I think, did you shoot some videos with cable in there recently? I heard, I heard Northboard Cable was shooting some, some video around White Cliffs. I assumed it was part of this grant application, maybe not.
No, we could certainly use it.
Yeah. Would be, you know, they would get excited, I mean, it's an exciting project for someone that funds underutilized projects, underutilized buildings, because it's obviously underutilized, and it's potentially beautiful. You know, I kind of wish we had done this a year ago, but we are where, where we are. I think this gets us into the queue. If we, if we don't get this, we can find other ways to, to do this, but I, you know, the flip side of that, if they say no to this, that might be their way of saying, no, this isn't the kind of project that we want to fund. I don't know, I, I don't know how much feedback you would get if they declined to, to fund the $75,000 for design. But we've got to do the design before we do the construction anyway, so I, I don't see any downside to doing this. Yeah.
I just have a quick question. I appreciate the, the work that you've put into completing this grant. If we obtain this grant, if we receive it, are there any side, I don't even know what the right word is, is there anything negative, or is there anything that it would impact what we can do with the White Cliffs going forward, associated with this grant?
No, the reason why we're proposing to button up the building in a temporary way is because we didn't want to do anything that would then have to be undone, should the town decide to sell it to a private party who wants to, you know, put a large addition on, or should the town decide that they want to use it for municipal purposes and put a large addition on. So we wanted to leave it flexible. Definitely, those additions need to go, because they're causing our mold and mildew problem. So we kind of are stuck. We can't really proceed with that mitigation with the additions attached. So it will enable us to move forward in a direction, but not hem us in, in any way.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just question, the, the $1 million for, or the, I guess, the 1.25 million for demolition, was that, that number, where, where did that number come from? Because I assume, right, the, the architectural services that we'd be trying to get the grant for is going to tell us how to do that correctly to, to help button up the building. But where did that number come from?
Don't anticipate that the demo and temporarily button, buttoning up the building is going to take that amount of money. So my thought was, the, the maximum you can really ask for under the underutilized properties grant is a million dollars. So let's get the biggest bang for our buck, apply for the most amount of money we can. So not only would we remove the additions, we would button up the building, but then we could address some of those environmental hazards. So my strategy would be to address as many as we could for the total dollar value of So I don't know what the cost of demolition will be. That is, we have to do the design work first. And as part of the design, they would come up with cost estimates for a demo.
Is DPW still involved in any of this?
Well, they had received the cost estimate for the environmental mitigation, so that was from Capital, Capital Investment, I believe. So they had supplied me with that quote. And I believe it was in the realm of 1.5 million, maybe it was 1.7 million for the environmental mitigation.
But, but they, because they did so much work when, when we hired them to look at the building, and...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the DPW. Are you talking about the DBVW?
Yes.
The, yes, they're the ones that supplied the quote. So the, the company that prepared the assessment and reuse plan, they are the ones who supplied the quote for the architectural services.
For $75,000?
Yeah, it's a little less than that.
Okay, so did they, so they must know what this design entails, right, if they came up with a concrete figure?
They came up with the scope of work that appears in the grant application, and they gave me the, the amount for how much they would charge to do that work. They don't know what the demolition and the buttoning up the building cost will be until they... until they do their work.
At the time that they submitted their final report, they they actually gave a number, I think. This was under White Cliffs Mansion Assessment and Reuse Study under um option two municipal use. It says demolition, four hundred fifty-four thousand dollars.
That's a rough estimate, and the figure is four years old.
Right. But could they?
They did a rough estimate, having not done uh the the work that they need to in order to, in particular, the the issue is that second floor addition. So one of the concerns that the architects um that prepared the estimate told me is they're not quite sure how the roof lines uh join to each other um and what type of work needs to be done to separate them. So that that's a back-of-the-envelope estimate. And what I'm going to need for the underutilized properties grant is a very detailed estimate and construction drawings.
And at this point in time, DPW, so what I'm what I'm really getting at is, and you know, we're all a little worried about the building, because every year, and especially as summer comes, every summer, there's more mold, there's more, you know, water intake, those those additions have to come off, and they should have come off a long time ago. But i- is there any way that the that DPW could come up with the design in the next few days and you could apply for the for the demolition?
Absolutely not. It's going to take them approximately six months to do their work.
Wow. Okay, and they are going to do the work?
Uh if we hire them, you know, uh if if that's the direction we want to go in. They, of course, are the most knowledgeable about the building. So it it would make sense, it'd probably be cheaper for them to do it than for others to do it.
The best practice for us would be to get three quotes from qualified folks. But because they have already standing knowledge of the building, you'll probably go with them, but we should, just as a best practice, get quotes, solicit quotes from qualified vendors to do the do the design work that's necessary, but we we got to get the grant first.
Yeah, well, I was just hoping that they had enough knowledge of the building at this point to, you know, to do to do a design and and a good estimate, so we could just apply for the construction. But I guess you're saying that's not possible, so that's too bad.
Yeah, we explored that with Amy one day, two weeks ago, and we went down this road for quite a while on email and in person, so yeah, that we just don't think it'll be competitive. We can, but we don't think it's going to get you anything.
Yeah, I mean, I I would just say, I, you know, it's like, uh as we've been saying, it was probably a good idea, at least I think, to move forward to request a grant. You know, if we don't get it, then there's another conversation of how much more public money do we want to spend on White Cliffs and where is it going? But if somebody wants to give us a grant to figure out how to be, you know, to do something positive for the building, to at least leave options open down the road, I would be in support of that, so.
Other uh questions, comments, thoughts on this grant? Are folks comfortable with going forward with this grant application?
Yes.
I would be, yes.
Yeah, Julianne?
Yeah.
Lori, Lisa?
It's White Cliffs.
Okay, meaning?
She has to abstain.
Okay.
She's in a butter.
Okay. Yeah, a proper procedure would be to recuse yourself at the beginning of it and state that and uh and do so.
Going thing.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like we're supportive of this one. So thank you very much. I mean, I'm I'm so, I mean, in the two years that I've been on the board, this is certainly the most exciting thing that has happened about White Cliffs and moving forward.
Is there a sewer we could connect it to and maybe get Mass Works for it?
Too soon. Um so I'm hopeful. Um and one more grant application for some downtown branding and wayfinding.
Yeah, um so I'm going to share my screen again. Look at one more.
Great.
Map to share. Um so what this shows, so this is a a map of uh across the town in Northborough. Um this is Route Twenty. Um this is uh I'm going to see if I can make it a little bit bigger, so it's a little bit more legible here. Um this is Church Street, Whitney Street, Pierce Street. So essentially, the project area would cover a half-mile radius from uh Four West Main Street, which in my mind is the dead center of the downtown. So this is a recommendation that was made in uh in both the two thousand twenty master plan as well as the recently completed two thousand twenty-four downtown revitalization plan report. Um so the idea of the branding program is to create kind of like an identity, a logo uh that can be utilized on our wayfinding signage program, or or maybe on banners, or uh, you know, welcome to the downtown signs. That would be located within the town center. Uh so the wayfinding signs could identify uh key municipal properties like uh the location of the library, which is kind of confusing, um how to get to it. Everybody can find the library, but not necessarily how to park at the library.
Accurate.
Uh that baffled me the first time I tried to go there. Uh as well as Assabett Park, uh there's, of course, the War Memorial Park. Then there are a number of benef- uh businesses in the downtown, some which are kind of difficult to find because they're tucked in on on little side streets. Um so this is a technical assistance grant. So the way it works is if uh we are able to secure the grant funding, then uh the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative will assign us a consultant. So uh we don't have a choice, and the consultant, they assign the consultants. So usually, there's a a couple of different consultants that do this type of work. So they're experts on these types of projects. And they will come out, um they'll meet with us. Um I did prepare a scope of work for what I envisioned for the project. I envisioned uh that there would be a focus group, which I'm actually uh going to be meeting with the Master Plan Implementation Committee on Thursday night. So I am going to ask them if they would be willing to serve in the role of the uh of the focus group, because, of course, they have broad representation from numerous uh boards and committees that I'm sure would be interested in having a say. So uh the focus group, we'll just call it that, um would uh be responsible for um working with the consultants, um pointing out uh various uh destinations that should be uh reflected in the wayfinding signage program, helping to identify uh key aspects of the downtown that should be considered uh when creating the brand or the logo. Um I am envisioning that there would be a public outreach component, so there would be some sort of public workshop um where different uh possibilities for the brand and the wayfinding uh signage hierarchy would be presented, and we receive feedback from uh the attendees on uh which uh logo or design they prefer. And then those will be finalized and ultimately presented to the select board and a joint meeting of the focus group. So that's kind of the way I envisioned it. Happy to answer any questions that folks might have.
Questions? It's it's because the electronic mouse, if you will, is just over Brad's name.
Oh.
That's the only reason why. His his hand is not up. I can see it on my screen. Yes, it confused me first two.
Too many things.
Hybrid technology question. Questions or comments?
I I just have one question. If if the consultant recommends something that we don't like, what do we do?
So the focus group would be working with the consultant to come up with uh different options uh that they're okay with, and then those options would be presented at the public workshop for ultimate selection.
And this is I I apologize if if you stated it. Does this grant give us just the design or design and installation and purchase and everything else?
This is just a technical assistance grant, so they'll only give us the design, and then they'll give us specifications that we can then take to a sign maker um to have the various sign elements fabricated.
So that's another opportunity.
That is not part of this, so later we're going to need money for the actual implementation.
Okay, that's what I thought, but that's that's good, because that gives us another opportunity to review the design, review exactly which signs we want and everything else if we want to get into that level of detail.
Can I just want to follow?
Lori, I maybe I didn't hear you. What about the the actual physical locations? Does that, does the technical assistance point out mapping as well?
Yes. Yep, so that will be part of the uh the whole planning process. So the consultants and the focus group and ultimately the uh community workshop will all be uh talking about the the best locations for the signage as well as what type of destinations should be highlighted.
Thank you. Mike?
Just a a question, Lori. Was um any of this sort of similar work done with the last consultants who were brought in on downtown revitalization? And the meeting we had at like the high school, we got to put the stickers on the map, and and that was 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 wayfinding, branding, any of that also covered in their study?
Uh not really. Um the the recommendations were to participate in a a planning process to identify a brand and uh wayfinding elements. So it was a recommendation that came out of that. Um there was certainly in the report discussion about key elements that are important um that that maybe we would want to highlight in a wayfinding program, but it didn't get into the nitty-gritty of uh creating like a logo or the the sign elements themselves.
Okay, and then after this technical piece, is there any other grant funding for implementation of it that's available?
Um well, we could. So of course, uh you know that there's uh the Phase One Streetscape project. Um so that uh is a design project that will hopefully uh be getting underway soon. Um so as part of that project, the first year will be design, and then the second year uh would be implementation. So the timing, in my opinion, works really well, because I would like to include the wayfinding elements and the brand into the construction of the Phase One Streetscape improvements. So we could apply for those elements as part of the that construction project. So there is grant money available for downtown revitalization and Streetscape projects. So uh absolutely, we could have um some of those design elements paid for with grants as part of a wider Streetscape project.
Thank you.
Would you anticipate that whoever the consultant is that's hired for this meet with some of the department heads that run municipal buildings? I'm thinking particularly the library, as you mentioned. I I would imagine library staff has a pretty good idea as far as the mistakes people made make trying to to find them, and that might inform the consultant and how to rectify that with signage.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh that's uh that that's one of the key issues that I would like to contend with. And then there's also the confusing um traffic pattern associated with the CBS and how you get back into the downtown.
I could tell you exactly what turns people make illegally and almost run me over a couple of times a day, so I guess. Okay.
I have been known to turn around in the uh the little island on where Whitney Street and Church Street uh intersect, so that I can go back into the center.
A lot. I I happen to have very good view of of that island, so maybe I've seen you do that.
It's a very handy turnaround, but that would be irritating the commercial um properties along the way.
Questions or comments on this? Thoughts on this one?
I like it.
Yeah, yeah, I like I like it a lot. Yeah, again, I don't I don't see any downside. I see a lot of opportunity for community and staff involvement in the preparation of this, and then certainly a final review before we um spend any money or seek grants for the implementation. And I think having consistent wayfinding signage in the downtown area is a key element in moving the downtown forward. I really like it. Everyone supportive?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
This, okay. Lisa? Great. Um there being no other grant applications, um I think what we should do is entertain a motion. So um Julianne, Steph prepared a motion. I'm going to suggest that we just strike the Mass Works grant from
Right.
uh from that, given that the board is not interested in pursuing or at least supporting uh that application.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to submit letters of support for the following grant applications under the Community One Stop for Growth Program as presented by Planning Director Lori Connors for Mass Downtown Initiative Technical Assistance Grant and for the Underutilized Properties Grant.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say.
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Lori, thank you so much for the the lengthy discussion on each of these three. Um really appreciate your efforts. I appreciate your efforts even on the one that we decided not to go forward with now, because we've been educated on that Mass Works process for future grant applications, so not a waste of time, but by any means. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, um next up, we've got a couple of ratifications. So I will say before we do these votes that during the executive session earlier tonight, we approved a lease agreement for Four West Main Street. This is for the dentist that's been located at Four West Main Street for a number of years. That will um uh allow that dentist to continue uh staying there for the foreseeable future and for the town to receive um lease payments uh for the use of the space. Um and we also approved the purchase and sale agreement for Thirteen Church Street, the old, old fire station. This was discussed uh certainly many times in public session prior, uh and this is the actual execution of the purchase and sale agreement. So these become public documents with these ratifications, um so we've got a couple of motions to that effect. Laura, I think you've got the first one.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to ratify the lease agreement between the town and Jacob Stein DMD for premises located at Four West Main Street, Unit one zero three, as presented by Town Administrator Tim McInerney.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Laura, seconded by Julianne. Any discussion? All those in favor, say.
Aye.
I see that as unanimous. And next up, we've got the ratification on Thirteen Church Street. Lisa?
I move the board vote to ratify the purchase and sale agreement for the premises located at Thirteen Church Street as presented by the Town Administrator Tim McInerney.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Uh any discussion? All those in favor, say. All those in favor say aye.
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 Hear that as unanimous. Excellent. Tim, thank you very much for your work getting those two sorted out for tonight. I know those have been complicated. Next up, we have ratify the town administrator's appointments to the Peaslee School Building Committee and assign a Select Board member to serve on the committee. Tim, why don't you walk us through the application process? This was your first process dealing with appointing members to a building committee. And I will say that per our charter, building committees are under your jurisdiction. So you appoint the members with the ratification of the Select Board.
So as you know, there's an MSBA queue and a process for MSBA funding and one of the requirements is to establish a school building committee. And that has to be satisfied by May 31st, so we're all talking about compressed timelines. That certainly is one. But once we learned, Town Meeting approved the $900,000 for the feasibility study, which got us another bureaucratic step along the way. This was the second piece. So the day, maybe two weeks prior to Town Meeting, we put this out in anticipation of Town Meeting approving the funding. So we had the application process open for maybe three weeks. And then last week, we had eight... Excellent. I mean, I was just blown away by the amount of enthusiasm, by eight applicants. They were... We had the backdrop of a goal of diversity, some groups to make up or, you know, be a mirror of the community and what the community looks like. So we had eight applicants, three women and five men. And so I had the goal of diversity, at least for the group I had. I held those interviews last week on the phone. It was awkward because they were all much smarter than me. So I had those conversations and the work experience that each of them had, it was not an easy decision. It was very difficult. But I'm happy to report that I do have four. I have two females and two men with extensive backgrounds. I outlined that in a memo to you on the 17th. And, you know, from architecture to building construction to owners' project management. One member without a lot of technical expertise, and I thought that, and that's Erica Hall, who's a Realtor, who, talking to her and then reading her resume, really shined a light of organizational excellence for a group like this, to have someone in that organization or in this committee that can provide organizational context. And a fresh pair of eyes as a parent as well. I think that was the second reason why I chose her. Not having complete experience at the, you know, that the charge laid out, it certainly talked about, you know, people who have been around and in the school district. But her expertise and a fresh pair of eyes is the reason why I chose Erica. So yeah, Diana, Erica, Tristan and Robert for my recommendations to you. And each have, you know, almost over 20 years' experience for each one of them in construction management and/or architecture.
In addition to that, we had suggested that someone from Parks and Recreation be named to this. So that name, I guess, Ellie Lane forward, Sean Durkin's name forward. So you're recommending that as well?
Yes.
Yep, and the school committee has the authority to name a member. In case, they've actually named two, Kelly Garnett and Lauren Bailey Jones, two members of the KDA School Committee that would have to be, you know, certainly overseeing this project. Makes sense for them to have some substantial part of that. But again, you're recommending that approval also. That's...
Yes, so you have the non-voting and then the voting members. So this group total would be part of the voting membership.
This would be, yeah, this would be, I think, the entirety of the voting members. You'd also have to name the non-voting members, which is a little bit of a different process. That's generally staff.
Yeah, I mean, their titles are laid out, no matter who they are, the titles.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we get... I think we saw it in a meeting packet a few weeks ago. MSBA gives you a very detailed breakdown. This is what a school building committee looks like. And part of the process is we not only need to give them the names by the end of May, we have to fill them into those slots and say what their qualifications are and everything else. I say, you know, I'm very impressed with the applications that you got. And one of the things I like about particularly those four residents at large, three of them, I don't think, have been on any public boards before. One of them certainly has, Diana, but the other three are not names that I can at least remember being on Northborough boards and committees. But clearly, they have some particular expertise that would be...
And they are involved in the community with scouts or whatever. They've been around.
Yes, yeah.
But not in...
Not in government, yeah. And which is good. I like new people to come in and get them addicted to this fun. So that's great. In addition to this, we have to choose someone from our own ranks to serve on the school building committee. I mean, we don't have to, but I think it's critical to have a Select Board member on, you know, on that. The other thought that I had is if we add up, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 and 8, if we take these seven names plus a Select Board member, we're then have an eight-member body, which is an even number. Traditionally, boards and committees are odd numbers so that you don't have a tie. So I think there's an opportunity if we felt that, or really if Tim felt that there was another of those members that was not appointed that he thought might be added to turn it into an odd number, then we can do so at some future date. You know, I wouldn't want to put Tim on the spot here right now, but that's a possibility. We can amend the school building committee membership later, but we need to send a finite list in right away. So that was one thought I had, and I will ask the same question that I asked this board a couple of times before. Are there any members that are interested in serving on the school building committee? Hearing none. And by the way, I do see Brad's hand up when we have our little discussion. Brad, don't worry, I'll recognize you. Hearing none, I will, if it's all right with the board, I will volunteer myself for that so that we have a name in there. I have served on multiple school building committees in the past, not in Northborough, but in my former town. I was part of building a new high school, a new elementary school, rehabbing a middle school and a small renovation to another elementary school. Both the MSBA program and the prior SBA, which preceded the MSBA. It's a lot of fun. If anyone else wants to do it at some point, let me know. I don't anticipate this feasibility study committee getting off the ground until early next year, next calendar year, because the MSBA won't give us the go-ahead to actually do anything until we have a lot of our other ducks in a row. This is still sort of pre-feasibility. So I don't anticipate that requiring any of my time or anybody else's time. If that becomes an issue, I certainly know that I serve on the Fire Station Building Committee. I don't want to, although I love building things, I don't want to usurp all of that. We'll figure that out before that becomes any kind of an issue. So if it's all right with the board, so we have a name on there, I'll put my name on there. Is that all right with you, Tim?
It's great.
Okay.
Yeah, I... Same hourly rate?
Yes, yes, exactly. Same, yes, exactly. My net pay for this work continues to decrease per hour. All right. Any questions before we open it up to... I see one audience question up there. Lisa?
Of the four people that have been picked, I'm a little concerned with Diana Nicholas. She's been on a lot of important committees, White Cliffs Committee, the Fire Station Committee. She was on Design Review for some time. And I know that there was another architect that had applied because... And that when we do have people that have applied for different positions more than once and then they're turned down more than once, that we lose a little bit of continuity of getting volunteers again. And I think that with, there's nothing else that I've been doing with volunteers is trying to get as many new volunteers as possible. And I think that as much as she brings to the table, everything that she does bring, and it's quite an impressive resume, that she's been very instrumental in a lot of different flavors of what's happening in the town. And I think that, you know, children are older. And I'm looking at the architect that's listed on your four left. And I believe he has children at the school and two years, four children. I would offer that to be replacement of the two since I think he brings a new perspective into the town. And I just think it would be good all around to have that, a different face and different plan for this job.
That's kind of what I was alluding to in terms of adding an additional member to round it up to nine, was exactly that person.
I would definitely use him. And, you know, maybe even go into Ellen, Teglia Farrelly, if you're looking around it.
Yeah, yeah, I think these all would have been good members. You know, ultimately, it's not our choice directly. You know, our job is ratification, for better or worse.
Well, I'm just making that statement. I mean, I think a lot of people did hear that as an architect, she doesn't feel that a budget is important. She didn't ask for one for the fire station. That was on the meeting. And I don't think that's a... I mean, I think there's been a few people that have said something about it. So I'm bringing it up as a courtesy for the public.
Other comments or questions on the names put forward?
Are you willing to realign the people for this committee?
No, I mean, I did the interviews. I feel strongly that Diana was... I'm charged with two things, right? I gotta have the backdrop of diversity and I have to have the most qualified people as I saw them. And that's how I saw her. Kevin's great, and if I could fit him in, if we want to add another member, it's fine with me. But in terms of switching her out, her expertise is unsurpassed.
Are you willing to put Kevin forward as an additional person?
Yeah, we want to modify the charge to add one more. Nine's a tough committee to deal with, but eight is... The school, it wasn't made completely clear to me the school was picking two.
Yeah, I think it's unusual, but my opinion is it's their project. I mean, it's for them. It's our project for them. If they want to pick two, they should pick two.
Yeah, I have no problem making it nine members. And I'd pick Kevin and Harpy.
Would we have to check with that person again, or you think we could make that decision tonight?
I think you'd, you know, I'd...
I think he applied for it. He interviewed for it.
I think he would be fine. Okay.
And he has applied for other boards in the past. He's tried to throw his hat in the ring. So I'd really like to see him participate. I wish there was more seats, but I understand the limitations from a scheduling perspective.
Well, you're making room. You're modifying for it. It's good. I just wanted to be clear that I haven't denied him or any place.
Right, I know. Yeah, yeah, it's these things happen. Believe it or not, Northborough existed before you joined us.
Yeah, surprisingly.
And I do appreciate that we had such a great pool of candidates that applied. I know that that was due to a lot of work from a lot of Select Board recruitment as well. So I appreciate everybody that's put their hats in the ring.
I have a question for Tim, actually. So you're, you know, on paper, Erica does look like she doesn't have like the specific technical experience that the others have. And to me, Erin Teglia Ferry is like the ultimate stakeholder person, right? She's had children there, she works there, she's been on the PTO, she's on school committee. You know, explain to me why you chose Erica over Erin.
That's an odd discussion to have, right? I'm not going to disparage somebody over someone else. I just felt that she was a better, a better fit for the committee from an organizational, keeping the committee organized.
Okay. I just, I, because it seems to me if we're looking for stakeholders, Erin would be the, like, the ultimate person to represent parents, students, faculty. Though, that's just my feeling on the topic.
Is it, Tim, sort of, another thing to consider, right, is diversity of thought, right? So you kind of, what I kind of picked up on is not to have sort of a committee of all architects, right, to build this thing? That you want people with that different perspective, different diversity of thought, coming at it a different way. I don't know if, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but is that sort of...
I was trying to find balance. I read their resumes. I had conversations with them. It's more of an art than a science.
Right.
So I went with the people I thought were the best to can get the project done with the taxpayer in mind and the students in mind. So that was kind of the backdrop of the thinking.
Are we ready to hear? We've got three people in the audience and all three have hands up.
Yeah.
Okay. In the order that they raise their hands, Brad Blanchett, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know your question or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brad Blanchett, 6 Rodney Terrace, speaking on behalf as a Peaslee parent here. The two other applicants that I wanted to bring up were Erin and Kevin. Both of them, I'm curious as to why they weren't picked. I mean, they're both rooted in the Peaslee community. One is an architect, the other's been on PTO and school committee. And with all due respect, one person that has been on these other boards, White Cliffs, really hasn't gone our way, to say the least. The fire station in the fall will be a close call because of the price tag. Just want to be clear, I'm not pointing a finger at any single individual, but this could be an opportunity to kind of go in a different direction and get some different perspectives. I mean, I'd personally like to see folks a little closer to Peaslee as far as having kids currently in Peaslee or just leaving the Peaslee community. Or they may not enjoy the renovation, but know exactly what is going on within those four walls. Less likely to make decisions in a vacuum and just get some input from the folks that work there every day and just get a different perspective. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. And next up, we have Scott Rogers. Scott, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know your comment or question. Appears you're unmuted, Scott, but we do not hear you if you are speaking. You're muted, and now you're unmuted.
And can you hear me?
Now we hear you, Scott.
Okay, great. So Scott Rogers, 26 Tomahawk Drive. I just rose my hand because it's a bit irritating to have a member of the board continue to disparage one of the primary people in town. This vendetta that continues since the massacre of the Design Review Committee is...
Scott, I think you're...
Just stop.
Okay, all right. Does that conclude your comments, Scott? I trust it does. Thank you. Sorry about that, board. And Susie Sizlicka, here we go, bringing you in. Susie, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind, please.
Susie Sizlicka, 8 Emerson Road. Can you hear me?
We hear you well.
Okay, so I was calling you, kind of covered what I said, but I didn't want to raise my hand and then unraise it. I had spoken with him earlier. I did have, I had seen, I reviewed the packet because I was very interested. I'm not a Peaslee parent, but I really do care about our schools a lot and have been involved in many school things, from free kindergarten to PTO to being a PTO board member during COVID. Along with Erin, we were board members and had to go through that. And she was on school committee too, so I know, you know, she was in the trudges and knew all about budgeting and everything that went on. And we really got to know the school as well. Also, so not seeing her on there, I was a little bit sad, but I was a little bit... I was on the ZBA also when Kevin went through that whole process twice. And I really commend him putting his hat back in the ring. So I would really hope that you guys could find a place for him on this committee because I think he would be such an asset and really do a great job. And I do commend Diana because she is on a lot of committees in town. But I think being on two building committees at the same time might spread a little thin. So, but I think being on two building committees at the same time might spread a little thin, but, I mean, if you've got the time, go for it. But if you guys could make room for Kevin, I think that would be great. I just want the best for this building and what comes out of it, so thank you all for putting in the work on this.
Thank you, Susie.
Thank you.
Comments, questions, whether it be from comments made or otherwise?
I would say, if we're thinking about adding another member, Tim, did you, did you want to take time to review candidates, or are you comfortable, if we were to add another member tonight, we were speaking of, or did you want to review them again and then come back to the board? Or, you, I mean, you've made these decisions, did you want to make a decision, rather than the board making a decision on who to add?
Well, I mean, I, you know, we got to get a committee, from a bureaucratic standpoint, to the state by the thirtieth for us. So, if we can make the decision to modify the charge to get to five and add a member that, you know, I would recommend Kevin, but, you know, if the board wants to do something else, that's, that's fine.
I mean, ultimately, you are, you make the appointments, we consider ratification.
I know, I was wondering-
What I'm hearing is, is you're saying, you would like Kevin appointed if we make room in the charge for that.
Correct. Okay. I was just confirming that, and Mitch said it a lot more concisely than I did, so thanks.
You got me started, so that's all right. Are we comfortable modifying the charge to add an additional member, thus increasing it to five sort of general appointments, at-large appointments, which would be a total of nine voting members on the building committee?
I am, yes.
I would add an alternate.
Yeah, I can't really do alternates on this type of committee. MSBA has, they will give us many, many, many millions of dollars. In exchange for those many, many, many millions of dollars, they set a lot of rules.
Oh.
So, they say exactly how everything is done. Most of their processes really make a lot of sense, some of them are really obscure, but that's-
Because if these go on for years, I mean, you know, life changes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, my hope is that the committee will be stable at least through each phase, which is what we've tried to do on the Fire Station Building Committee, is we had one for feasibility. We took a four-year break on the fires, that was, that's a weird one. And then when we reconstituted, it was similar, but not exactly the same. My hope is, as much as possible, it would be the same throughout the entire duration of the project, but at least through feasibility and design. It would be really good to have it be identical. Yeah, I mean, life happens. Sometimes people move out of town or change jobs, can no longer participate, and that will happen. A benefit of having it, having nine voting members is rough, but a benefit of that is, even if a couple of them do have to leave the committee, we have still a large number of, what I think would be an excellent committee, without having to add somebody in just to take, just to fill a seat midway through the design process, for example, which is risky. So, I think this provides us a little bit of backup in that, in that process. That's why I'm okay with it. Lisa, thoughts on that?
I want to see Kevin on the committee, certainly. I'd like to see, I'd like to see Erin on the committee. I think she brings, I think we need parents, I think that's, I don't see anything here, really, with how the children react and what they need for an environment, and I'd like to be a little bit heavier on that than having everybody with the same qualification.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, that's the school committee's jurisdiction, and they're putting two members, two voting members on this, plus they will have the superintendent of schools, the school business manager, the school principal, will all be non-voting members.
Yes, I'm talking just more parent. I remember Patty Cress was an incredible asset to Lincoln Street School, and I think Erin would be a Patty Cress.
Yeah. I, I'm trying not to get too involved myself into the names, because that's Tim's job. Our job is ratification. Is this a good committee that we want to ratify? Or is it not a good committee that we do not want to ratify? Is kind of our job, which is weird, that is different than other appointments that we make. The charter sets it forth this way, whether we like it or not. So, it's a different, for us, it's a different process. Is this a good set of people that is being put forward by Tim? Is ultimately our decision.
I just want to remind the board, we did talk about the charge and what we wanted it to look like, and that these are the, the items that we have here, preference, prior experience in construction and public buildings, financial management, architecture, engineering, and/or construction experience preferred. So, that was the parameter in which I was, well, one of the parameters I was looking at discussing this with people as well.
Good. All right. Are we ready to, any other comments or questions before we move forward? So, in addition to the names that are on this list, it sounds like Tim has appointed Kevin Wersh to that list, so that should be added there for consideration for ratification.
Do we have to do a vote to increase the committee?
Do you think we should separately do that, or is that implied by doing this?
You adopted the charge.
Okay.
You were going to adopt, I think, now that I'm remembering, adopt the charge and the appointment process at the same time. So, a motion to the effect to update the charge to be five members at large would be fine, along with the five members.
Okay. Could be part of the same motion and further?
Five at-large members. You have two school committee, one board appointment, and then one from recreation.
Okay. All right.
One vote.
Why don't we do it separate? Keep it clean. I'll entertain a motion to increase to five at-large members on the charge for the school building committee?
Second.
I'm hearing that all around, I think Julianne, and then Laura. For that, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, that is done, that's unanimous, and then a motion on ratifying the list. Julianne?
I move the board vote to ratify the following voting member appointments to the Peaslee School Building Committee. Residents at large by Town Administrator Diana Niklos, Erica Hall, Tristan Bezant, Robert Tomasetti, and Kevin Wersh.
And also?
Oh, and also Parks and Recreation Commission Representative. Per recreation director, Ally Lane, will be Sean Durkin. School committee representatives, per school superintendent, Greg Martino, Kelly Gannett, and Lauren Bailey Jones.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, I'm going to give that second to Mike.
I got one in.
Got to support your wife on the school committee, so, there we go. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, excellent. I hear that as unanimous. Thank you, that's very good. I trust you'll get that over to the school department, who can notify MSBA. Let me know if you have, if you have any needs to, like, fill people in on slots or anything like that, it's probably self-explanatory. With that, we move on to reports. Let's see, why don't we start at this end of the room and move across? Laura, do you have any reports tonight?
I just wanted to express my thoughts with our military families coming up for Memorial Day. If you want to join us, we will be meeting at the corner of Monroe Street for the parade, which will go through the various Civil War monuments throughout town. And that concludes my response.
Thanks, Laura. Julianne, any reports tonight?
Well, I think we all want to say welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
I think you're just going to be a great addition. And then I will report on Cultural Council. I hope you've all noticed the beautiful chairs around town, and I don't know how many people got to participate in open studios. I attended, I went to about three of them, and talk about talent applying for committees, also the artistic talent is amazing in this town. And we should thank Cultural Council for providing venues for them, so that we can all enjoy the artistic talent. And I attended the Historic District Commission, they're continuing their work on the committee for Revolution 250th, in collaboration with Community Affairs and Cultural Council, maybe, I'm not sure who else is going to be involved in that. They're continuing work on the Legacy Tree Program, and just a little, a little interesting note, if you didn't watch the meeting, apparently, Northborough had their tea party before Boston did, several months before, so.
I had heard that.
How about Northborough? And that ends my report.
Thank you, Julianne. Lisa, any reports tonight?
Just a couple. The Scholarship Committee is awarding $5,000 total to six Northborough High School seniors tonight. These funds are raised by the tax checkoff box on our bill, as well as fundraisers organized by the board members, direct donations online or by mail, and through our new tribute donation The select board's been invited to the high school for their Wednesday night meeting, for a short meet and greet. And many thanks to Liz Nolan and her committee for doing all the hard work that they've done. There also, she asked me to say that there's two openings on the seats to be able to fill their committee.
For the Scholarship Committee?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Second was, and we didn't say this the last time, I don't know if he, Robert Ellis, who was a historian in Northborough, passed away. And interestingly enough, from what he passed away and how old he was, has two different notations and two different pieces of information, so it leads it to say that it was, he was either 88 or 89 years old, and he wrote two books from the Northborough Historical Society during the Civil War, and The Chronicle Life of Philosopher Sir Francis Bacon. He spent 25 years, I believe, as the historian in Northborough, and I think it's nice to be able to tip his hat and just express our condolences to his wife, Christine, and give him some recognition. I also talked to, I got some information on what you had said about the arts and the entertainment, and how well that went, and the, let's see what we have here. So, the chairs and the doors will be auctioned at the same time, and I believe that's the 22nd of June. I'm going to try to read my, I'm running. In the arts project around town, there were two professional photographers, one at home studio, and one always set up at Davidian second floor. There were three artsy businesses with special events, the Purple Rose, Craft Works, and Paint Your Own Pottery. There was a professional artist, Melissa Clark, at her home studio, two churches with small artists. This is an opportunity to expand if done next year. A professional artist, Victoria Chapman, published children's book author and illustrator, set up at Hot Works, a workout place near Arrow Coffee. Current Algonquin senior, handmade wooden charcuterie board, set up at Gathering, Gather Provisions, and recent Algonquin grad selling Nate Natty Four Ingredients Soap, set up at Arrow, and a watercolor and fine artist on the walls at Arrow. Nancy Levendowski brought additional things to sell. Se Lavie had their fine artist works on the wall at Se Lavie. Marian Burkata painted in the downstairs foyer as people arrived. And finally, the Artist Reception Meet and Greet at the Library for New Artists, Jenna Williams, whose work is currently on display in the big room. And I thank all the artists that donated their time and energy, and I did hear a few things got sold, and I think that the Arts Council is doing a great job, as well as everybody else, and let's bring some more economic development through arts and entertainment. And that's the end of my reports.
Thank you, Lisa. Mike, any reports this evening?
Yeah, I'll use the excuse of the late hour to be brief, but, yeah, I mean, just thank you to everybody for being so welcoming. You know, thank you to the board, thank you to Tim. So, you know, we look forward to, you know, the next three years, or seasons, whatever you like to call them, of both agreeing and disagreeing with you guys, and, you know, hopefully doing what we can for the citizens and taxpayers of Northborough. And to second Laura's comment, that, you know, hopefully we have a nice, robust turnout for Memorial Day, to honor those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. I was going to mention a few things that were mentioned earlier, that's a benefit of going last, as I can say less. I did attend a Massachusetts Municipal Cyber Security Summit about a week and a half ago, which was really, really good. It's something very important that I would like to see this board pay more formal attention to. As a follow-up to that, I had an extended meeting with our IT Director, David Kane, who walked me through quite a bit of what he's working on for cybersecurity. I'm impressed with the work that he's doing, and awed by the amount of work that is left to do, which is true of any municipality and any corporation. I would encourage any board member that is interested in learning more, whether or not they have the technical knowledge to understand those kind of terms, but even at a high level, I think it would be worth your time, and David has offered to meet with any of us. David has also offered to meet with us as a board anytime we would like, and I think we should take him up on that. That meeting would likely be during an executive session, because we'd be talking about security issues, which does qualify for executive session. And my hope is, is that we can do that and take a greater role in that, that's a really central office, you know, it is as central as the Town Administration Office is, because if the IT infrastructure of this town goes down, no department can function.
Yes.
And, so I think it deserves a lot more attention from the board level than we have been giving it in the past, so I think that's a, that's a good thing to do. Adding on to the Memorial Day Parade, I certainly hope everyone from the community attends, I sure hope everyone from the board can attend. One thing that traditionally the board does is a board member speaks at that. Who would like to volunteer to speak at the Memorial Day Parade?
Did you volunteer? I'm actually going to be out of town.
Okay. All right. Well, sorry, I must you. I'm looking around, eventually I'm going to have to look inward, and you're going to have to hear my voice more. Hearing none, I will speak on behalf of the board as chair.
Thank you.
And maybe that's a benefit or a downside, perhaps, in delaying the reorganization, that's how it has to be. But I think it is important for the board to be represented in that process. And that ends my report. Moving on, actually, Tim, any reports from you tonight? We used to have two separate items for a little while, and then we just says reports now, so I almost missed you.
We can always add the words to your report.
Yeah.
Put it at the beginning. No, just quickly, I just want to thank the legislative delegation, they coordinated a call with CSX about that rail crossing of Route 20 in Blake Street. We talked about it when I first got here. I get, of course, complaints, and then I see, when I'm in the right lane, I see the rail come up out of the spur lane, so I just, they are coordinating it, they're going to get it fixed. We got the right people on the call, so I appreciate their work. Also, we do have an airmark that is slated for Assabette Hill for the drainage project. It is only 50,000, but it is a lot to help us get through the design phase for that drainage project, so we appreciate that. You can remember when they sat here with us, the delegation, they asked for projects that we could neatly package and get to them. We sent them many, so we at least came out with 50,000 for that particular project. Regarding HR, we have a number of applicants for the Health and Human Services Director position. I did form an internal committee, including a board of health member and a youth commission member, and they interviewed last week, and they're going to make a recommendation for me to interview one or more applicants that have come through, so I'm hoping to have that appointment wrapped up for June 3rd, and maybe an introduction to the board at that meeting on June 3rd. So, that would be the goal there. We talked a little bit about the RFP for Full West Main. You know, that whole building needs to, needs to see what the market will bring, and so I'm hoping to get it to the street for July, with some responses back in September. If the board wants to review before it hits the street, I'm happy to share that with the board for comment. Also, on June 3rd, we did go out to, we solicited quotes from architects for the police station project for the siding. John Morrow was the lowest, best qualified bidder. I want to have him come before you on June 3rd, so you can talk about what the scope should be. So, he will be here with Scott on the 3rd. He's actually an architect out of Grafton, who did a lot of municipal stuff for me while I was in Grafton, regarding one Grafton common, so there's some history there. But we did solicit quotes, and we got John to be the best and cheapest. Continue to work on investigating solar options at the senior center, we have a vendor doing a presentation tomorrow, and we'll find out what the cost would be and how we would actually- We'll find out what the, what the cost would be and how we would actually fund that. Financial Planning Committee, they're meeting on the 23rd. You'll have to check, it's either 5:30 or 6:00. I think this note is old. I think it's actually 6 o'clock on Thursday. The Goals Meeting, we're looking at July 29th now at 6:00 PM. Just a reminder for the Board, and obviously we'll send you more notes on that as we go through. And the LED light project, I, you offered the approval of ARPA funds for LED funds. I went back to the vendor that gave us the analysis, and I questioned, you know, that's a six-month-old proposal. Is that really going to be the number? Unfortunately, they refreshed the number up by 50,000. So I told them today that I'm going to go through either CMRPC for technical assistance or the Metropolitan Planning Council, which is outside of Boston, to do this LED light specification for the streetlights. So it's still in process, but I'm not going to just go with this one guy who said it was great at the beginning and changed his number by $50,000. So it's an ongoing process, and we're still working through it. So it's just an update on some of the items we've been working on, and that's it.
Question on the, the LED project, because that was ARPA funds. Do you anticipate moving forward and having a signed contract in place by the end of this year so we know where that is? Okay, good.
I'm hoping September, by the latest.
Perfect.
Give myself some cushion.
Good. Appreciate that.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, of course.
When you talk about the railroad, is it, is it just on Pierce Street, or is it the one on Route 20?
It's one on Route 20. It's the only, the one we go across every day, and it's as loud as can be.
Okay, yeah, I've had a few people call me about that. So thank you.
At least we got the coordinated effort with CSX on the call, so.
Okay, that's great. And the, the other question is, on the architect for the police station and what you're bringing in, are you doing a combination so we have options to see what's available?
We're not, we're, we're, you're starting fresh, right? He's going to come in, introduce, tell you what he sees on the ground, and you all can hash out what you've seen on the ground and decide what you want to do next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other business to come before the Board tonight?
I just have a little question.
Yeah.
I've gotten another inquiry about our ARPA plan, and I know this is one that keeps coming up regularly, so I just wanted to mention it and just.
Yeah. I, I anticipate that our next regular meeting will have some, some quality time on ARPA.
Perfect.
We've got to move that forward.
Thank you.
Yeah. It was important to get through-town meeting, get a consolidated list together. I sent that to the Board and a couple of members of the public that requested it. Like, we've got a couple of additional things that have come in, and I even added, Lori mentioned something about White Cliffs that I added to the list live during the meeting. Just, so I'll, I'll get that updated list out.
If you don't get the grant.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was it. So I'll, I'll update that list and get that out.
I don't think I've, I don't think I've seen that list.
Oh, that's right. You're new. I keep, you've been here long enough, I forget you're new. So I will, I will send that.
Can't shake this guy.
I'll send that to you right after the meeting, then I'll make sure that everybody gets the latest, greatest for the packet for our next meeting. And I think the, the top-level discussion will be, like, how do we want to go about doing that? There are well over 100 requests on that list. We could spend probably 10 times as much ARPA money as we actually have if we wanted to fund many of the things on that list. So, you know, I think we need to develop that process and then very quickly thereafter go through and, and make it happen. There may be one request from the school department at our next meeting that we might want to consider funding right away. But other than that, I'm not aware of any pending sort of urgent requests, something that's timely. I just don't want to discuss it publicly. That's that. Hearing no other business before the Board. Is there any public comment that anyone remotely particularly would, given we have no attendance anymore, would like to make? Raise your electronic hands, and I'd be more than happy to recognize you. Going once, going twice, public comment is closed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I hear that as unanimous.[1794.08]